Are the city council that was noticed for today, would you please join me in the plaid of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your government.
Thank you, roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Councilmember Shepard Rami.
Here.
Councilmember Taut.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jake Kowalski.
Here.
And Mayor Udi.
Here.
The agenda is posted seventy-two hours prior to each special meeting at City Hall, the Crowell Public Library, and Stoneman School. It is also posted on the city's website. Moving now to public comment, the city welcomes public input. At this time, the public may address the city council on items that are not on the agenda, but please be aware that pursuant to state law, the city council may not discuss or take any action on issues that are not on the agenda which was posted for today. Please note that all comments will be limited to three minutes will be timed by city staff. City Court Baker, would you please explain how public comment will work for today?
Thank you, Mayor. For each item on the agenda, there will be time for public comments. We'll accept comments in three ways. We will take in-person comments for each item. Please fill out a speaker card and turn it into me if you wish to speak on an item. We will also accept comments via email sent to cityclerk@cityofsanmarino.org. The email address is also found on the agenda. These will then be read into the record. We must receive these emails before the public comment period for the particular item ends. The comments may be summarized if necessary to limit it to under three minutes. We will then ask for comments from our Zoom participants. When we ask for public comments via Zoom, there are two ways you can let us know you would like to speak. First, you can use the raise hand feature, which is a button that's found by clicking on participants and then clicking on raised hand on the bottom right side of the screen. Please do not use this feature until we have asked for public comment, or else we may not see it or know which item you're asking to speak on. As a second option, you can send a message using the chat box saying you would like to speak on this particular agenda item. Comments will be accepted only until the end of the public comment period for that item. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone from the public that would like to speak this morning?
We do.
Chief Baker?
Mr. Nivedh Kaurashy.
Did this mean we're letting the city clerk?
Can I ask, do we have any more chairs to accommodate? We have a lot of people standing in the back. Are there any more chairs here? Thank you very much.
Good morning, councilmembers, mayor, and city staff. As many of you know me, my name is Nivedh Kaurashy, and I am the San Marino Police Officer Association President. I represent the twenty-four sworn officers of the association. The city has recently proposed a vaccine mandate with termination. In light of medical and religious exemptions, the city is not willing to create an alternative method to keep employees. Eleven of our tenured officers will be terminated, leaving thirteen officers to run a police department. The city speaks about transparency, yet this issue was decided in a closed-door session. The association is being transparent with the city by letting the community we represent understand this issue. If the city contracts with outside agencies, when these officers are terminated, there will be no vested interest for these contracted agencies. They may even have the same vaccine mandate. They may not have the same vaccine mandate as respond to calls within our city. I want our community to understand that association is not against a mandate. We have tenured officers who have their personal reasons or beliefs in freedom of choice to be unvaccinated. These officers should not be compelled to get a vaccine or be terminated for employment. As officers, we lose freedom, but we should not lose the freedom of choice when a vaccine can cause certain consequences for some individuals. All the association is asking for an alternative solution to save these eleven valuable employees. These officers have risked their lives time and time again through the height of the pandemic over the past one and a half years, and were not terminated. We managed to keep our residents safe with our personal protective equipment and safety procedures. Now due to the vaccine policy, their commitment in the city is not even valued. Although I am not the president of the General City Employees Association or the Firefighters Association, the sentiment is the same. There are several citywide employees who will be terminated if this policy is enforced. There's a huge risk here if this policy is implemented. I value my job and highly respect working for the city of San Marino. I do not believe our city's values are still in this policy. All the city employees are first responders in my book. The majority of these employees were not exempted from working day in, day out through the previous year and a half through the pandemic. They are risking not only their eyes against COVID, but their family's health and safety. Even with that risk, these city employees came to work respecting the community and staying committed to their job even up until today. I understand there are medical and religious exemptions. However, this is uncharted territory as well. Some of our members have been told, and if employee is granted an exemption, there may not be a way to keep them or accommodate them, and ultimately termination. If the city is fairly negotiating with the city's unions, why was there already a push for termination? How are these negotiations fair if we're already going to be told that there's no alternative? These employees are extremely distraught in fear of losing their jobs. If this policy is in place by the city in the recent future, the city will lose many valuable citywide employees.
Mr. Danny Gutierrez?
Good morning. My name is Danny Gutierrez. I'm the vice president of San Marino Police Officer Association. True public safety requires a collaboration between law enforcement, the city council, and the community they serve. The mandate of the COVID-19 vaccination is not a collaboration with the community. It's being dictated upon us by the city leadership with the added threat of termination. City leadership has not been transparent with the community they serve. Leadership has had a closed-door sessions regarding the proposed vaccine mandate without any input from the community that pays public safety tax for public safety. It is absolutely alarming to me. Instead of honoring our commitment to pride and service, the city chose to implement a mandate without any thought or courtesy given to the officers that it impacts, the community they serve, and the families they go home to. I want to point out, these officers standing behind me have come to work tired, working twelve to fifteen days straight, twelve, fourteen, eighteen-hour shifts at times. And now the city is choosing to honor that dedication, that hard work, to force them to get vaccinated or terminated in closing. Now I ask you this, how many of you have outside jobs outside the city? Are you being forced to vaccinate? How would you feel if you were my officer's shoes right now, when your career is on the line, we're doing nothing wrong? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mr. Fain Alista? I apologize if I mispronounced your last name.
Good morning. Thank you, council, for allowing us to speak today. I just want to say that we share a common goal with you, public safety. And part of that is working together. I am on our POA board, and we're just looking for an alternative. Our members aren't saying that we don't need to be vaccinated. We just want the option for testing. We're willing to work with everybody to accomplish the common goal, which is public safety. I've been with this department for fifteen years. I've devoted a lot of myself. I have friends and family who have lived in the city for decades. I know what the city is capable of, and I know what all of you are capable of. I know we can work well together. And that is what I'd like to express to you, that we can work and get through this. We've already accomplished so much during the pandemic and all of the unknown. So that's why I let everybody know that we're here and willing to work and work with you. And I just want to again say thank you for listening to me.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Vanessa Golden?
Good morning, everyone. My name's Vanessa Golden, and my Chinese name is Qiang Hong, which I try, a lot of people can't pronounce it. I was born and raised in China. I came to this country in 2000, and I became a police officer in 2012. I came this country because I pursue happiness, liberty, and justice. And I became a police officer because I care about justice. I care about people's rights. And at this moment, my career is at risk because I didn't do anything wrong, but because of my belief, and I might not hold this job anymore. I have to give a little history about China. I don't know if anyone experienced the government tell you what to do. I was I was born there and raised in China, and then I left the country when I was twenty-eight. And all I heard is the government is making decisions for everybody. They're telling people you can only have one child, because it's best for the country, best for your family, best for yourself, so best for everybody else, so you can't have a second child. You have to either do abortion, or you have to, the man has to tie their tubes, or you'll you'll get fired, you got fined, you might be arrested. This is what I'm what I'm experiencing and hearing for my entire life when I was in China. And they will tell people that you can't you can't have beliefs, you can't have your free religion, you have to believe whatever the government tell you to, which is the Communist Party. I disagreed. I came here looking for freedom, looking for what I can believe. I chose this job. I did give up some rights. I can't just free speech whatever I want, but I do want to, I do believe that I have my rights. I do have rights to protect myself, my family, even though at this moment, I will go out there and take a bullet for any of you guys here. I'm willing to sacrifice my life to protect, to service this community, people here. But it comes to my own right, I have to take this stand. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Brian Wong?
Mayor, city council, and the members of the committee, my name is Brian Wong. I've been a police officer for the city for over twelve years and a member of the department for approximately twenty. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I was raised in San Marino. I went to school, San Marino High School, I need to middle school. So obviously, I was, I grew up here and I still have family here. My parents are active in the community. I'm proud and fortunate to serve such a wonderful and unique community. I find it unfortunate. The city has mandated every city employee to either be vaccinated or be terminated. This decision affects every member of the department, including those who are vaccinated. The impact will result in overtime to those who continue to be employed. This forced overtime can lead to officer fatigue, stress, and time away from their families. I'd just like to end this with every officer is committed to the top service the city deserves. As long as we are employed, we will uphold this oath. Thank you.
Ms. Mia Hernandez?
Good morning, Mayor Udi, council, and Dr. Marlowe. I stand before you today to ask you to reconsider your decision of mandating the COVID-19 vaccine. The members of the San Marino Police Department are not anti-vaxxers. They are in support of an individual's right to choose. That is the beauty of living in a free nation. Prior to becoming a police officer, I had the honor and privilege of working alongside each and every one of you. I saw you make informed and oftentimes difficult decisions on a daily basis, especially when it came to the well-being of this beautiful community that we protect and serve. You are all fair and reasonable. You make decisions with integrity and pride. Please, Mayor Udi and council, I respectfully ask you to continue to uphold your tradition of excellence. Please reconsider your decision to mandate the vaccine. Please consider an alternative testing option. My brothers and sisters of the San Marino Police Department family are not asking you to back the blue. We are asking you to support the red, white, and blue. We took an oath to uphold the Constitution, to enforce the law fairly, and defend the rights of all. What will be your legacy? Terminating eleven dedicated, hard-working peace officers? Or will you be remembered for making the right decision and supporting an individual's right to choose? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mia?
Morning, mayor, and members of council. I have three things, if you would indulge me to talk about. Number one, and this is before I got here to see what the audience would say, but my first subject is the vaccination policy. I believe that the city council made absolutely the right decision in mandating vaccinations for all of its employees, and if they don't want to be vaccinated, that's their free choice, but they also can leave the employee of the city. So I strongly support the vaccination policy, and I hope that you enforce it. Secondly, my second subject has to do with dead trees in the city. There are three or four of them on Houston, right, the street that I live on, well, on the corner of. And these these trees are a health and safety issue of the city. They've been marked for eventual removal, but I understand that the policy of the city is that every six months, you re, the council reviews the individual trees to be removed, and then they get removed. I just don't think that's a good policy at all. I think that if our staff and the arborists look at the tree and they say they're dead, they ought to get out of there and be removed and stop this thing where the possibility of branches falling on walkers going underneath the trees, that looks terrible for the city, and it delays the opportunity to get healthy trees planted in this spot. Now, I'm talking about trees that are on city property, so please take care of that. And just, I mean, look, if if you have a policy about removing dead trees, we don't have to wait six months and micromanage which trees are coming out. Trust your staff, trust the city manager and the other staff to make the right decision on on dead trees. I mean, when they're dead, they're dead. They're not coming back to life. The third thing I'd like to talk about, and I don't know really the details of this. I'm on shaky ground in saying this. This has to do with your decision or non-decision on the Starbucks proposition. Mayor, you you ran your whole campaign on being friendly, making the city run like a business. Well, I think being run by a business means that you take care of people that have property here, the needs of the community, of what they want. And like I say, I don't really know all the details, but I think that was a decision that should have been looked at and debated. And I also want to point out that this thing about drive-throughs is not foreign to San Marino. The banks have drive-through capabilities, and that doesn't seem to be any problem. So I, it's probably too late now, but I think we've lost city tax revenue. We've lost the opportunity to serve the needs of our community. We've lost the opportunity to fill a large vacancy in our city that has way too many vacancies anyway. So that's the three things I want to talk about, the vaccination, the trees, and the Starbucks thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Udi.
Ms. Joy Flores?
Can you all hear me? Standing on my tippy toes. Good morning, city council. Thank you for your service to our incredible city. I think by the turnout today, you can see many of us share the same love for our town. Most of the moms here represent the next generation of Titans and want to carry on the legacy and pride we feel. We also probably have about a hundred kids between us. I wanted to address two short things on the agenda as well. As we all might be experiencing serious COVID fatigue, mandating vaccines with no testing option feels very un-San Marino. That's all our police and firemen want, is the choice to be tested. I've been tested weekly for about twenty months. It's it's really awesome. That feels, this feels logical, as we know the vaccine does not have anything to do with transmission. We are an extremely educated city. I would hope this wealth of knowledge would transfer, even when fears seem to be leading every conversation and decision. I also know another thing, well, that's on the agenda, is grad night, and that is something our city also adores. Tireless hours are given by parents to create a safe environment for our kids to celebrate together. Please consider preserving our officers and firemen the right to choose what is best for their bodies, and continue to give our community a safe option to celebrate milestones. Thanks.
Thank you, Joy.
Mr. Donovan Genal? Mr. Donovan Genal?
Good morning. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you. When I was young, when I made a stupid decision, my dad would tell me I lost the plot. In the announcement that San Marino decided in a closed session to implement a vaccine mandate, it said it's a job to keep the city safe. It's not, actually. It's a job of these people to keep the city safe, and they're doing an amazing job. It's your job to provide the funding and the support that they need. Yesterday, Scott Gottlieb, former FDA commissioner, vice board member, said if cases hit below twenty a day per hundred thousand, it's endemic. Pasadena, since September first, has been below twenty cases a day. It's not a pandemic in San Marino. Most people in Pasadena are vaccinated. It's likely to be higher already in San Marino. COVID is no longer an issue in San Marino. Study after study shows these masks don't work. Social distancing does, and yet all of you here wear cloth masks, almost everybody. You know, the only mask that work are the proper surgical ones. But I ask you to reconsider the vaccine mandate. It's un-American, as you can tell by my accent. I came to this country twenty-one years ago. America was a silent city on top of the hill. It looks like in the eight, last eight months, somebody has turned off his brain and turned off the lights. Please reconsider this decision. There's not enough data on this vaccine. Vitamin D works just as well, actually, funnily enough. The vaccine doesn't stop transmission. It doesn't stop infection. Data from Israel in the UK shows that while it does help with severity, even death gets less and less and less. We don't know what we're setting up for right now when you make people take the vaccine. Let's just test if you're fearful, even though it really isn't necessary. We've been testing in San Marino. Cool, this is right? We've had false tests. Yeah, we've had no close contacts that were actually tested positive. First, the virus is transmissible. If all these kids running around, something doesn't end up, guys. So please reconsider the vaccine mandate. I want to applaud all of our citizens who are safe. To the last eighteen months, our citizens people sit at home in the ivory towers. Thank you.
Those are all of the speaker cards I received for in-person comments.
Is there anyone in the virtual world that would like to comment?
We have received, we did receive one email, and I'm seeing some raised hands coming up as well. The email that we received is from Mr. Thomas Walsh, and it states, Dear City Council, board members, my wife and I encourage you to seek out community input regarding the policy to mandate vaccinations for the police, fire, and city employees or be terminated. We strongly oppose this draconian and unreasonable approach at the risk of losing a significant portion of our police department and decreasing the safety of our community. Thus, a much more reasonable and common sense approach would be to provide the police with the option to either receive the vaccination or submit to regular COVID testing. Besides the freedom of individuals to determine their own health treatments and risks, unvaccinated individuals are of little risk to those who choose to be vaccinated. A vaccine mandate assumes that one size fits all. Yet, studies have determined that individuals who have contracted COVID and have recovered have a greater immunity and long-term protection than those who have taken the vaccine. Most recently, a study at the Cleveland Clinic Health System followed fifty-two thousand two hundred and thirty-eight employees and found that there may be little to no benefit for recovered patients to receive the vaccine. In addition, there are new findings that seem to reduce the need for vaccines. A study at George Washington University found that low doses of aspirin reduce the risk of hospitalization and death from COVID by fifty percent. Other studies in Scotland and Ireland indicate that vitamin D greatly reduces the risk of severe COVID dramatically. Also, the therapeutic remezavir used early on decreased the risk of going to the hospital or death by eighty-seven percent, and regeneron's monoclonal antibody reduces risk of severity of COVID by seventy percent. In addition, Merck has developed molnupiravir that prevents COVID from replicating, basically stopping it in its tracks, and should be readily available before the end of the year. Pfizer is also developing a therapeutic. Therefore, there are many therapeutics already available and highly effective when used early on, which greatly reduces need for vaccine for those who don't want it but want protection. We recommend a common sense approach that follows all the science and not just the science that fits a particular narrative. Respectfully, Tom and Patty Walsh. Okay.
Any other public comments?
Yes. Mr. Ten, if you want to go ahead and mute yourself. Oh, you're still muted, sir.
I'm not muted anymore. Thank you so much, city council, honorable mayor. Ken, we were neighbors. This is Tim Ekagany. I live in the city since nineteen sixty-nine. I'm not sure if I can comment on the housing element now, because I don't have the, I don't have the agenda in front of me. Is that okay for me to comment on that now, or is that a different agenda item?
The housing element will be our next agenda item, so if you can hold on for a few minutes, we appreciate it.
I will do so, and I also reiterate what the last speaker said, the science one hundred percent is, this this is not a pandemic anymore. I really love the science that she quoted, and I joined that, but I will mute myself again and comment during the housing element. Thank you. And support the police. Do not make them get max vaccinated. First Amendment rights, this is the United States of America, not China. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Are there any other public comments?
There are no other requests for comment at this time.
I do want to, you know, thank everybody for coming and sharing their their thoughts. We will take it into consideration, take it seriously. But again, pursuant to public law, we cannot discuss or take action on on any of these comments, but we we do appreciate it, and the process will continue. Thank you.
And perhaps just for education, if we could explain without discussing that we're in the meet and confer process with the unions right now to discuss all of these these issues, is that correct?
That is correct.
And and as a result, none of the action we have taken so far is, has been implemented. It could only be implemented after the meet and confer process, and however that ends up, is that correct?
Yes, that's true, with respect to all of our represented employees.
Okay, I just want the public to know that because it's it's important to realize that these comments are wonderful, and they'll be taken under consideration.
Do any other council member?
I want to make one other comment. So the public is aware, as councilmember Taut just discussed, we're in a labor negotiations with the various unions, but it's important to know, before any final decision or actions are taken, this comes back to city council, and it is a public, it will be a public agenda item, my understanding is.
That's not necessarily correct. Pursuant to law, direction for the labor negotiators happens in closed session, which is why the council has met privately. There are limited circumstances under which it would come back. This particular issue would come back to the full council in open session.
Mayor, may I make a suggestion?
Yes, sir.
Um, should we?
Should we discuss item number three first? Can we move that before item number one?
I think, I think we'll stick to the
Okay, we'll stick to the order of the agenda.
Vice Mayor, do you have any, any comments at this time?
No comments. Thank you for everyone who showed up.
Yeah, again, thank you, public for, for coming and sharing your thoughts. We appreciate it. We'll now move on to the public hearing. Item number one, the housing element workshop, Director Cervantes.
Eva Cho will be providing the staff report on this item. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor. No.
Good morning, Mayor and Member of the Council. This morning, staff is providing a brief update on the housing element draft element that was provided to you at the August 3rd City Council meeting. At that meeting, the council provided direction to staff which included the removal of the Carver Elementary School and the baseball, the Delmar Barfield from the inventory list. Additionally, City Council expressed the desire for staff to do additional outreach to the community so that we get more community member and school district member to be involved. On that note, City Staff has conducted a town hall meeting on August 25th. Prior to that meeting, City Staff did provide an invitation, individual invitation to new property owner and occupants of the new addresses on the list, inviting them to the, to the town hall meeting. The town hall meeting was well attended by 30 members of the community. Three of them included the school district members. Additionally, staff has provided a program called Coffee with a Planner, which provided the community the opportunity to discuss the housing element or general housing issues with the city staff on a one-on-one basis. That program ended on September 16th, and so far, staff has met with four community members and they were residents of the city concerning about issues on how to produce additional housing to meet state's requirement such as production of ADU and site selections. And finally, staff has provided an updated inventory list in your staff report and thus on page three. And also that list is incorporated in the draft housing element for your review. As you can see that again, that Carver Elementary School site and the Delmar Barfield is no longer on the list. New site have been added and again, those property owner and occupants of those new sites were informed of their addition to the list with a invitation to the town hall meeting. So on that note, staff is referring to our housing consultant to go over some of the detail as to how we are designated each site for either overlay zoning or missing middle zoning potential in the future. And if you have any question, I am available. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Talt, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you for your report. With respect to the, the so-called missing middle, how does, has the state given any guidelines as to how we are supposed to measure SB nine and SB 10 against the missing middle because with the it's the, the impositions by what's happening in Sacramento are just disastrous. And now to try to measure what they want here and what they want with SB nine and 10 becomes that the whole city's up for grabs.
So staff and of course, the city house will have been advised of the addition of SB eight and nine, which will become effective at the beginning of the year, January 1st. However, in terms of its implication and how the housing element document itself attempt to address or anticipate this consequences coming out of those two, two bills, I will leave that to our housing consultant to address your concern.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that last sentence?
So our housing consultant will address customer task concern.
Actually, our city attorney will start.
Yes. There's been no coordination that we're aware of between the HCD and the legislature with regard to SB nine and SB 10. So I'm not aware of any guidance that's been issued in terms of what kind of assumptions you can make or what kind of credit you could take in your housing element for anticipated SB nine or SB 10 development. The housing consultant, housing element consultant may have some different information, but I'm not aware of any information yet that would allow you to take credit or make assumptions about how much development will occur as a result of SB nine or SB 10.
Good morning. Thank you, Jane Riley, through the chair. I'm with Forleaf. I'm the primary housing element consultant. I'm Housing Policy Director for Forleaf, and we've been engaged to prepare the housing element. We've, we've been working on the SB nine question for a while. We did hold a training on Monday with Goldfarb Blitman as well as the Turner Center to try and get up to speed on exactly what this would mean for our housing elements. And the word that we've gotten so far from HCD, your city attorney is absolutely correct. There's been no guidance. The word we've gotten so far is that they will consider this as fulfilling missile, missing middle housing needs in kind of the same ratio that they are for accessory dwelling units. And the Turner Center has put out a report. It's a statewide report and it, it looks at what the financial incentives or, or lack of financial incentives would be and when the market would actually bear these units being constructed. I can certainly forward that to the council. Bottom line was that there would not be as many as the proponents of the bill would probably have liked to believe there would be. We already have a program in the housing element for missing middle housing. I want to be clear that the SB nine does not apply to any historic sites, whether they're state or locally designated. And that's the vast majority of the sites that we're looking at in San Marino. And we've already mapped those out for exclusion from the missing middle program. So those sites that are left would be the ones that are subject to SB nine. Again, we don't know exactly what's going to happen yet, but we have already accounted for what we're going to be able to get out of SB nine in the housing element.
Would there any, be any opportunity to file it for a stay of the imposition of the housing element, given what's happened with SB nine and SB 10? Because it seems not only unreasonable but unfair to, to force our hand on a lot of these matters when they have this overriding legislation in Sacramento. I mean, is that consideration? Has that been taken under consideration?
I'm not aware of anybody who has moved forward with an attempt to get relief from HCD on the deadlines. My anticipation is that they would not want to grant any extensions on deadlines. They've already taken a process that used to be a five-year process and now turned it into an eight-year process because it takes them so long to do things. So I would, I would not anticipate that they're going to give anybody an extension. They may. It's something that we could reach out to HCD about, but my anticipation is that at most, they might say, if you want to amend your housing element later on, there's nothing that prevents you from trying to amend your housing element.
Okay, so we can amend it. And what is the, if, if someone would just answer for me, rather than going back and trying to remind myself through these, this very large and extensive report, that this, is it the state that has required this housing element under their authority, under their police authority?
It's, it's the legislature that has adopted the government code sections that require that every city have a general plan. Part of your general plan is the housing element. So all of those rules about housing elements flow from that legislation.
What about the requirement that we provide for 9% more housing? Where does that come from?
That's the same place. It's the, it's the state exercising its legislative power, its police power with regard to trying to accommodate what they perceive to be the housing needs of the state.
And is there any litigation concerning that right now?
There is litigation that has been filed by cities in the Orange County cog. They have, there is a demur hearing that is pending, I think in when I say October, after which time, depending on what happens with the demur, I'm told that the Orange County cog may be reaching out for additional cities to join their litigation. And their litigation is essentially attacking the overall Rena number that was generated by the state and submitted down to the various cogs. I don't know whether they'll be successful or not, but there, I'm not aware that they're getting any injunction as part of this.
Because all we hear is that housing, that people are moving from California. And yet, they want to impose upon us here in San Marino, 397, but in places like South Pass and Arcadia over 2,000. I mean, is there any factual finding that they have to make before they dole out this, the, the housing requirements?
Well, the, the, the method of calculating the overall state need was done a few years ago and all of the metrics and studies that they use, you know, those are all
Upside down now.
I'm sorry?
Upside down now. I mean.
Right, and, and, and I'm sure their response would be, and we'll address that in eight years when we come back to it again.
If, if anybody's interested, you could go to, was it Living California, CaliforniaLiving.org? Was that livable?
Livable California.
LivableCalifornia.org, and there is a, a proposal now for a proposition in November 2020, 22 to give us the power back to make these decisions. But if the petition for signatures comes across and you're interested, please sign. But thank you, Joe.
Any other questions?
No, I don't.
Dr. Wong, any questions to staff?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Shipidromi?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I have lots of questions, so bear with me. I have met with Director Cervantes on this and thank you, Ms. Troy, for the presentation today as well as to our consultant. But I have some grave concerns about the process. First of all, it's incumbent on us, I think, to take our residents' concerns about future housing and zoning plans and changes to guide us because we're really here to represent our residents and not Sacramento lawmakers or anybody else outside the city. So I understand we need specific plans to meet the state requirements that we were just discussing and the numbers. However, there's still, even this is our third, fourth, I don't even know. I, I can turn it to you. Iteration of our draft element that we've been through, and there are things that are still missing that I think that council has directed specifically staff to do as well as every time we add new properties in as potential designated sites for future development, we need to let the community know. And hosting a town hall where we don't point out something as significant, for example, as San Marino Community Church or now the entire commercial block between Garfield and Chelsea as being potential development sites for multifamily housing is a huge thing because these are single-family residents surrounded. Obviously, the church is also by Valentine Elementary School, Girl Scout House. It's where people play Little League and AYSO, and it's in a historic district. And I was shocked because it specifically is a potential historic resource that's identified in our survey. So it should never have been on the list. And I don't understand how this comes to us and people in the community are not informed. I know there's town halls and there's coffee one-on-one, but we need staff to go out into the community and whether it's at City Club, whether it's at Summer Band and do it in person and have a list of what we are planning to do in different areas to meet our requirements. Because then people will know and we can understand what the community thinks are good ideas, possible things to be done, potential sites and what are not. Because I understand, once we put these lists and submit them to the state, it is very hard for us to get back those sites or to remove those sites should they wish to be developed. And again, it's up to the property owner. We have said this all the time, so that's important for everybody to keep in mind. But now we're designating 14 more sites, commercial as well as the church. And all of these are up to the discretion of the owners of those properties without the community that surrounds those properties giving a voice and telling us. So I have a real hard time and I don't know why. So this is framing the question why the changes that we've asked have not been made, like raising the requirement of affordability. We're still at 20%. Council gave clear direction since March that we have to come up with 83%, 331 affordable units or plans to build them. Requiring developers to come into town and do 20% or less of affordable is never going to get us 331 units in eight years or 10 years. So this is a farce if we keep going down this road. And I, I don't know what to do and I've spent all week talking to community members, emailing friends. I still don't understand why direction from council that's specific to excluding historic resources. It even says it. But yet, we're still putting historic resources in here, in historic districts are identified as our missing middle. Why we came to here today and something like the church is going to be added to our list? And fundamentally, why are we doing anything more than the absolute minimum? This is our opening offer. We are submitting a draft element. This should be pro-San Marino. We protect our single-family residences. We protect our historic resources. And we push what we can to the outside and commercial areas. That is fundamental. It's been a direction of this council, I believe, from the beginning. And yet, seriously, I will have to go through easily 30 pages here today to make the changes that are necessary before this can be submitted. And I don't think that's right because we've been doing this over and over again. And now I'm hearing that we have a pressure. We have to submit this by Monday. If it's not ready on Monday, it's not ready on Monday. But it's not on City Council. It's not on our residents. This has gotten to the point where we're really facing pushed up against the wall and I refuse to submit this. And I think that council, at least some of council hopefully will agree, there are a lot of fundamental problems in this document. The least of which is identifying projects and locations and properties that should not even be here. We need to do what we need to do to comply. So we're not sanctioned or we're not under a penalty. But submitting these, once we do that, we are opening up a lot of problems for the city, which is not a direction I
Is there a question for staff?
Yeah, why, why have we not gone to 50% affordability? Our requirement is 83%. It's 20% everywhere in this document. 20%. Why? That's a great question.
So there, the housing element consultant may want to weigh in on this as well, but I think there are two concerns with going above 20%. The first concern is that there's a section in the housing element that talks about constraints on development. And what HCD is looking for is a housing element that identifies sites that over the course of eight years can be developed. If you put too many restrictions or too many requirements on those sites, HCD will not evaluate them as viable sites. And the information we have is that north of 20%, HCD is not going to realistically view those sites as viable. The second thing is that under the separate sections of the government code dealing with inclusionary housing ordinances, if you have an inclusionary housing ordinance, which is an ordinance that requires a certain percentage of multifamily housing to be built at a affordable level, anything over 15%, you're required to do a feasibility analysis and submit that to HCD for them to determine that in fact, your requirement can be built within your city, that it's not creating a barrier to development because the number has been set too high. because the number has been set too high. The information that staff has is that you would still have to do a feasibility analysis before implementing even twenty percent, but between fifteen and twenty percent, it's likely you could get that feasibility analysis to indicate that development could happen. At fifty percent, it seems unlikely. So I think those are the two reasons. Again, I'm a little new to this process, so the housing element consultant may have additional information or concerns that she can share with you.
But just as a follow-up, if we come to a decision to put in a higher percentage, and we send it in this document, then it's up to the state to tell us to not build that amount of affordable housing. And so when we, if it's not built, do you understand what I'm saying? They're going to give us pages and pages of comments on whatever housing element we turn in, that will be requested changes or things. So whether it's twenty or fifty, that's one item that they're going to comment on. And we have, if I'm asking about timing, we have a feasibility study, which we have to do. That will take place in the next two to three years, and we will come to whatever conclusion at the net time, at the end of two to three years, and we have a feasibility study done. So why are, why would we not protect our city in the best way that we can now?
So I think that the feasibility study that you have to do to implement twenty percent, fifty percent, whatever it is, yes, that's assumed. But I think in terms of the comments that you would get back from HCD, I think they would, I would anticipate that they would say, the sites that you are saying have to be fifty percent, we're not going to give you credit for those sites. We don't think you can make the feasibility analysis work even in the next two to three years. So one of the comments is going to be either reduce that down to twenty percent, or you're going to need to add a whole bunch more sites in the city that are not fifty percent sites in order to meet your Rena numbers.
Right, so to my point, this is our first offer. We know we're going to get a lot of comments back that require us, but I think as we're, our board has business people. We've been in negotiations before. You don't walk into a room with what you know they're going to tell you to do. You walk into the room with what you want is part of your agenda, and I think it's really clear what we want for San Marino. So I, I again think city council has said this, or I have said it, and I have received agreement with some of my fellow council members over and over again. It's important for us to reach toward what will be our requirement of affordability and put it in there first. That's our first position. If state comes back, then they have to tell us not to build affordable housing. And I am waiting for that letter to come to us.
There's the chair. Jane Riley again, under both SB three thirty and SB thirty-five, which I know your council is familiar with, there's that we allow affordable housing developments ministerially by right at twenty percent affordability. We can't raise it above twenty percent and be consistent with state law. That's why it's set at twenty. That said, we do have potential to add a program like a different kind of an overlay program that would let a affordable housing developer come in and do a project that's at least fifty percent. That would be a supplemental program, it would be on top of what the state already requires us to do. But that's certainly something that we could consider. We can certainly speak to the concern about having historic properties still in the missing middle maps. We did correct those maps. And what you're seeing in the most recent iteration should be correct. We've gone through them parcel by parcel to ensure that those are correct. And I, I, I have heard some requests to go to the fifty percent. However, I did not hear the council majority tell us to do that, and that's why we did not do the fifty percent. And I, I do have thirty years of experience doing this. And it is, I, I will, I will promise you that HCD will not buy off on a fifty, a fifty percent requirement for affordable housing unless it's an incentive program. State says you have, you have to allow it by right ministerially at twenty percent, not at fifty.
So if we have to allow it at twenty, does not preclude us from allowing it for more?
And then. That is correct. That is correct.
My understanding is that we would like it to be more. And what that percentage is, we should determine today by a vote of council. And we should ask for more. And I have been, I have a historic resources survey map, if you want to pass that down. I made a copy. I don't have an individual printout. I assume you have seen it, because I brought this up over and over again. And it actually has, the church is a big green box. That's an individual listed historic, potential historic resource. So this is not accurate, and I don't understand why it's still not accurate. Because I'm not producing the figure seventeen, which used to be figure twelve, and it is wrong. It does not include historic districts or, and, or does include historic districts, development in historic districts, as well as individual properties that are individually listed in our survey. And that was the point of the survey, was to identify what areas in the city have extra protection from state laws. This is exactly what we're talking about fighting, is local control. And we are lucky to be in a beautiful city with many old historic buildings and areas. So, and this was a carve-out specifically by the legislature that I believe Councilmember Tolton and I spoke to some legislators about that very issue. So now is the time that we need to fully press on this. And I'm still seeing mistakes in this housing element, and it still should not be ready because of just these two big things. But we also have a lot of other specifics, so I'm happy to go into it, Mayor, or if you want to continue.
Let's, is there any other questions to staff before we have our debate?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'll start with a comment, and then I would like to have reassurance from staff and our consultant. I'm deeply concerned about Sacramento. On one hand, we're being given arena of almost four hundred units. January one, we can start to split lots in town, and instead of looking at one property, there could be four after it's split in two. And equally disturbing to me, I am our city's liaison to the San Gabriel Valley Cog. And this past week, I observed the most sobering, scary presentation I had ever seen. And it was by the Metropolitan Water District, high officials, with photos and documentation around our state about our severe, severe water crisis. Yes, we have money, water in holding, but that is being used. And you've all seen the photos of Lake Mead and other resources. We are truly drying up, and our water level is at its lowest point in perhaps history. During our meeting, coincidentally, our neighbor, Arcadia, said, now help me reconcile this. We've got this severe, severe water issue, and we've got to build three thousand units. So my question, and this is where I would really like staff, and if possible, our consultant, to be on board, to really track this with the state, because it feels like no one at the state is owning the confluence of all these points. They seem to be canceling out one another. And with our Rena due, I just think we don't have enough clear information to go forward. And January one is right around the corner. We best believe those developers will be knocking at residents' doors. So I guess my question is, will we indeed have the support of staff to keep us abreast? Hopefully, we can start to get some information from Sacramento. Right now, it seems like everyone there is saying, I don't own this. Thank you.
Aldo, what, again, what's the downside if we do not submit a housing element report?
The, so we talked about the timeline that we're facing of February tenth of submitting a adopted certified or an adopted city council certified housing element. The impacts of not doing that would revert us back to a four-year cycle of having to update this, this document rather than an eight-year cycle. Moreover, you could be facing questions from HCD or the state as far as not, why hasn't the city follow through with their request? You know, once, once we submit a document or a draft to HCD, we're anticipating in a sixty-day period to receive comments back from HCD. We can certainly face questions or concerns from the state as to why we're not going forward with those changes or amendments. And that certainly puts us on the radar with respect to the state. And as you know, with, I think it's SB two fifteen, there's additional teeth from state to, to, you know, go after the cities. And so you certainly could face that consequence as well of being at the mercy of the state. And, and if we're talking about control, the state can certainly, you know, exercise additional control on the city to mandate certain, certain requirements. And so the other, the other issue with respect to timing in terms of not submitting to HCD this draft by Monday is that it narrows the opportunity of having further dialogue with the council and the planning mission as the due date is February for submittal. We have scheduled, at least tentatively, to come back to the city council once we receive HCD's letter, to discuss that letter, as well as after that, scheduling a public hearing with the planning mission, and hopefully having a meeting with the city council to adopt the draft. Given that the timeline of having to submit to the HCD on Monday, we would be anticipating getting a comment letter by mid-November. So between mid-November and February, you know, that's a short period of time to have essentially three public hearings.
And when we, if we submit a draft housing element, it is going to be a negotiation, a give-and-take, back and forth with the state to arrive at the final product?
It can be, and moreover, even though we submit to the stated draft, we can still continue to do outreach. We can continue to do changes to the draft. Even after the deadline, as long as we submit a city council adopted document, we can continue to make changes of the document, satisfy HCD.
And to follow up on Councilmember Shipper-Romey's question, you know, in the negotiation, you know, you go in with what's best for you initially. You don't go in with what you think the settlement is going to be. Where on the continuum do you think we are with this draft?
I, I think this draft certainly meets the minimum standards that, that we've been guided to with respect to Jane and her team, as well as the council, our attorney's office. What we've submitted is, is essentially what, what staff has felt to be the most appropriate minimum standards of the state. We have not, I guess, negotiated to provide any additional benefit to the state or look to increase our numbers by any chance. We follow the letter of the law, and what we're submitting is, like I said, a draft of the minimum standards.
Good. Thank you.
Just one more question. We're required for three ninety-seven. Could you explain to me one more time why we have six hundred and sixty units realistic capacity?
Yeah, I will defer that question to Jane to answer that.
Okay, but what's our interpretation of that?
My, my understanding of the, there's a hundred and twenty percent increase to the Rena number. That, that's to deal with what is called a known net loss. And that, that, the known net loss issue sort of bugged with my mind as well. And so that's why I prefer that Jane or Joe answer that question.
But I thought we already discussed the known net loss, and, and we do not have a large amount, if any, of that issue here, because we don't have a significant amount. We're not tearing down any apartment buildings or converting anything here. Our rentals are rentals in single-family residential areas that will continue or not, subject to the landlord. There is, none of our programs are resulting in a net loss. I think that's pretty clear here.
Yeah.
So why would we, again, do more than we need to by several hundred? If we need to come up with three hundred and ninety-seven, that should be our target or thereabouts in each of these categories. Instead of padding it so much, because this says we have no net loss, and we've already been told that, given our thing. So again, I think that's not what the direction of council has been. We recognize that that doesn't really apply, so we don't need to have an extra bonus amount of units, literally hundreds of potential sites in, to comply. I mean, it's not in our, it's not in our city. That's not happening here.
And in my understanding of the hundred and twenty percent, that's not a mandate. You can certainly adjust that percentage to go much lower, but I will let Jane answer that question as to what's, what's the reasons for that, that policy?
Yeah, thank you, Aldo. Just a couple of things. So known net loss doesn't, it doesn't refer to the loss of existing units in town. What known net loss refers to is that, once you go through and rezone sites, and the sites that we're listing in inventory are examples, they're not necessarily the sites that you're going to be rezoning. You have three years to reach out to property owners and residents and make those decisions. But the known net loss refers to, if you have a site listed in your housing element for a certain level of affordability, let's say it's listed for twenty units of affordable. That's how you're helping to get to your three hundred and ninety-seven, and then you develop that site as anything else. You can't do that unless you find another site to replace it with, or you have enough units left in your inventory to make up for that. So you can't put yourself in a shortage at any time by approving development. So that kind of ties your hand. I don't know that it's, I would be much more worried in a community that's growing fast about known net loss than I am in your community, just because there's so, so little construction activity, and frankly, it's mostly accessory dwelling units.
Let me ask a follow-up to that. So it is, say, for example, if we were to zone a piece of property for, and the, the realistic capacity is twenty, and so the low income is, is four units. Are you saying that if a developer comes in and doesn't or doesn't have the, the low-income housing a- as part of their plan, that that then is taken off our list and we have to find it someplace else?
That's correct, unless you have the capacity, which is what the hundred and twenty percent is about.
So why would we allow a developer to do that?
You don't have to.
Oh, okay. So let's not worry about known net loss. We just won't let it happen.
So, so if, if I could just continue on one more point. So the reason that our housing element is showing six hundred sites, it's, it's in a, that's an aggregate amount of all the different kinds of programs that we're putting in place. And we're trying to convince HCD that they don't have to take a closer look at our sites. Because the bottom line is, under, under thirteen ninety-seven, you don't have a single site that meets the state's criteria. You don't have a single vacant site, and so every site that you're looking at is considered a non-vacant site. And every one of those sites is considered to have impediments to development unless you can bring forward something like a letter of interest on the part of the property owner or an expiring lease or something like that. You don't have any good sites. And so we're trying to convince HCD that while you don't have sites that meet their specific criteria, you have a variety of sites all over town that can handle different kinds of residential uses.
Do you realize how maddening that is? Because if we don't have sites, we don't have sites. Sorry, HCD. We've been taking care of ourselves since nineteen thirteen. You know, I, I'm sorry, we've, we're developed that. That is just maddening. It's, it's irresponsible on their part.
That's, and that's exactly the situation, and trust me, and I tell you, you are not the only community that feels this way. I think, I think most elected officials across California are feeling exactly the same way that you're feeling with the state coming down on you. Just one more thing, the legislative requirement is that you adopt, you, the city council, adopt an HCD-reviewed draft by the beginning of February. It's actually by October fifteenth, but we're not going to hit that deadline. So we've, we've moved into the, the ninety-day extension period after that. Your, your adopted draft doesn't have to do everything that HCD tells you to do. You can, or that HCD suggests that you do, as long as you make certain fine. You, as long as you make certain findings of fact, you, you will stay on the eight, as they say, the eight-year review cycle. If you adopt an HCD-reviewed draft by the deadline, which is in early February, you can also, as, as your city attorney referred to and as Aldo indicated, you can also go back and amend your element at, at any time after that. Most likely, if it's a substantive amendment, you will have to go back through HCD again. But that's okay. If you don't adopt that draft by the February deadline, then two things happen. One is you go onto a four-year review cycle. That might not be such a bad thing because you've got this rezoning coming up. You've got a general plan amendment coming up. You have a lot of like bigger discussion that you have to do within the next three years anyway. So being on that review cycle might not be the worst thing. The worst thing is if you adopt a housing element that's not in compliance with state law, then you potentially will lose local authority. And the new laws now say that the, the HCD can send you to the attorney general and you can lose your land use authority and let, instead of you deciding where an affordable housing project would go, the court would do it for you. Your general plan would not be valid, your zoning would not be valid. You would not be able to issue building permits. It's a, it's a really serious thing to not be into. And that's why we're trying really, really hard to meet these, as Aldo indicated, just the minimum requirements that we have to meet in order to get a certification from HCD. And then you can, once you get that, then you can go on. And when you do your general plan update, you probably should amend your housing element at that time because you will have had all those community conversations. You'll have a much better idea of where you want your land uses to be and so on.
And this again is a, just the, the next step in the process. It's a draft housing element and not a final document.
That's correct.
Mayor, may I follow up with a question?
Yeah.
I have a question for the consultant and director Savantes. What's the chance of our city having any affordable housing built on the list of, you know, of, of these properties?
Well, prior to SB nine and of course SB thirty-five, I would have said zero. But given SB thirty-five, that's, that's going to now go into effect on January first and as well as SB nine. I mean, the, the chances are, are increasing with those two bills. I'd hate to say this, but we're, we're already starting to get emails on interest on SB nine projects. And so it certainly is going to become a reality come the new year on seeing lot splits and seeing duplexes by virtue of SB nine. And so that's, that's the reason why we wanted to have the discussion on, on SB thirty-five tonight is to really take the next step here, which is going to be significant, to take some control back on some of these projects. And so I hope that answers that question.
Okay, how can we take the control back?
Well, that's, that's part of the next, that's the next, yeah, please see item SB thirty-five.
Vice Mayor, final question?
Yes, thank you. My earlier thought had been, and this question is for Jane, really looking at the four-year cycle and perhaps including the narrative that we're certainly not ill-prepared, but rather the state is ill-prepared. And we are more than happy to pick it up again when we figure out the lay of the land. What would be some of the consequences if we presented it as something that was proactive and that we simply wanted to see where everything falls?
That's a great question. Thanks for asking it. In a way, you're, you're kind of doing that because you're not rezoning sites as a part of this housing element. You're saying that you, you, you're admitting you don't have the sites that meet the criteria that HCD wants and you're going to have to engage in a three-year process to have those conversations and find those sites and get them rezoned. If you don't get them rezoned, then you fall out of compliance, assuming you are in compliance. So I think just by virtue of saying we're not going to rezon sites for three years when we've had an opportunity to establish a citizens committee and really look in-depth at these things, I think just by virtue of doing that, you're saying state, we're giving you only what we have to right now. We need to do some local, some local discussions and we need to honor what we have here locally and we need to find what's, what's appropriate for this community. And who knows, maybe within three years, you know, Orange County will have prevailed in a lawsuit and they'll go back and reassign arena numbers. I don't know. I mean, I've, I've, I'm always hopeful, but it hasn't happened yet. So a lot of things could happen in three years. But I think just by virtue of your, you're committing to rezoning, but you're not committing to any specific sites or any specific actions. I think you're telling the state that we're going to, we're going to take our time with this. And you can do that without going on a four-year cycle.
Can I, coupled with the fact that as we're already being told, we are planning on a hit from both SB nine and thirty-five. And to see what that looks like one year, two years out would certainly affect what we would then be submitting to the state.
Absolutely.
We know this is Big Brother. We, we're there. However, we really want to do it step by step. And as I said, because nobody at the state is wanting to own the component parts of these dominoes, I, I would be strongly in favor of doing that and including the narrative to say, no, we're willing to go along with this, but task us to do everything upfront without having all the info is inappropriate. Thank you.
I can now move to public.
I have one more follow-up for Jane.
Okay.
Jane, I don't know if she's there. Perhaps you can hear me. We've been told that, and this is a specific concern, that if we designate specific locations in our draft elements as sites where council can accept new housing development, once they're listed in the housing development, there's very little opportunity to deny development in the future. And so with that caution, that should make us hesitant for all the reasons brought up by the vice mayor about Senate and, and council member Talt and others about the development that's coming after Senate Bill thirty-five and these other things go into action in January. So I would really like to not designate specific sites because it seems like, my understanding is, once we put a site on this list or in this housing element, those, the city loses its ability to then review those projects and sort of take that back. They actually become, if you will, targets for development. Is that correct, my understanding? It's a legal question in part because I know our city attorney has opinion on this, but I also wanted to know, Jane, if you are, have an understanding of our ability if things are left on this draft element, what would happen?
Again, a great question. Thanks for asking it. So that scenario is absolutely true. If you have rezoned the sites and you're saying these are the sites that we have in inventory with appropriate general plan designations and appropriate zoning to handle the, the housing that we're saying is going to go there. Your sites do not, your sites are on a list to be considered for rezoning. So they don't automatically become targets or they don't automatically become a, a place where someone, a developer can walk in and build a housing development by right ministerially because they don't yet have the general plan designation or zoning to handle that kind of development.
Accurate? I'm directing that to now our city attorney, just so I fully understand because I don't want our hands tied about some of these specific designations.
Right, if, if it's okay with the council, if you want to take public comment, I'll check the statute just to verify.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We didn't like to open up for public comment. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this item?
I, I would.
Thank you, please.
Yes. May I speak?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you so much and thank you, city council, city attorney. I, I don't know if I caught the city attorney's name, but I am a resident of San Marino and I've got a couple of issues that are very concerning to me. I, I'm also, my background is I'm a litigator. I've been practicing law for over thirty-five years in complex litigation. This is a little bit cat out of the bag, but I'd like to make a public record of this and I'd like to get somebody from the city to officially respond to this in writing, especially the city attorney. And I'd like to know what firm the city attorney is with and do they have a DNO policy? Which we, that should be a matter of public record. I'd like to know who their insurer is. There is a major issue here with the number of units that this city is allowed to happen in the city. Three hundred and ninety-seven is ridiculous number. The Los Angeles Superior Court has a division called Ritz and Receivers. And you must exhaust your administrative remedies before you can go to court. I want to know why the city, if the city has had appealed the state's designation of the number of units. I'm going to know if the city council addressed that and decided in any session, which I can get from the Freedom of Information Act. And if they, or if they just did not appeal that number because other cities that are similar to San Marino are at forty units, which would solve this entire conversation. So one, and I want the city attorney to answer this question, was the city advising council that they could appeal the administrative and exhaust your administrative remedies? And if they did and the number was still three ninety-seven, we could have appealed to court, which we should have done, especially a city with our history. We are a single-family resident city. It was established in the CCNRs of the original City of San Marino, which I've actually viewed as a historical document. The city council should have known this. I want to know if they did know it. I want an answer from our mayor today if he knew it and what their decision was. That is the basic premise of, of my concerns. And if we waive those rights, I'd like to know from the city attorney's office and their law firm, why we weren't advising council of that? That would have solved this whole problem. And if there's any way we can appeal it now, I want it, I want to be somewhat involved as a citizens committee to get into the solution to help the city make more informed decisions. Three ninety-seven is unacceptable number.
Tim, Joe was not our city attorney at the time that, that number came in.
Well, who was the city attorney? What law firm did you have?
Go ahead, go ahead, just question.
The attorney firm that was representing us at the time was Richards Watson Gershon. We do have a new city attorney now. His name is Mr. Joe Montez and that's who you heard speak earlier. He's with the firm Burke, Williams and Sorensen. I'm happy to, if the council wants to do a back and forth, I can turn it over to a community development director for some history on the decision not to appeal.
I think it's very important that we know why the city did even try to appeal it and exhaust their administrative remedies. It is critical and we need to get the background behind it. I, we are, we are citizens of this city and the city council has a responsibility to explain that to its residents. This is a critical issue and we want to know what's behind not exhausting administrative remedies. I know the law firm of Richard Watson and Gershon very well. I also know Burke, Williams and Sorensen very well. I have a lot of his, over a seventy-year history with, with the Burke Williams firm. So I want to know what happened to the city. We deserve it. I know these are hard questions, but this is unacceptable that we're in, even in this conversation.
Tim, thank you for bringing up the questions. Aldo, do you have some history for us and did we appeal the three ninety-seven?
Yes, so there was, as Joe had mentioned, these numbers were generated by the state and distributed by SCAG, the Southern California Association of Governments. And during the process that started at least three years ago, they were providing draft numbers to all the, all the cities. At one point, the city of San Marino was issued a number of four, four hundred and twenty-four units. We objected to that number. And as a result of various objections, the number was reduced to about forty-seven units. There were then objections of various cities that questioned the, the methodology of coming up with those revised numbers. And as a result of that, our number went up to three ninety-seven. Under the, the advice of our prior city attorney's office, who advised us strongly that we should accept that number, given that it was a favorable, favorable number to the city, that an appeal could likely result in the number increasing yet again. SCAG did provide us with very specific criteria as to what we can appeal upon. Methodology was not one of those. Go back even further to two thousand and seven, under that housing element process that we did appeal, although we had twenty-seven units at that point. I was at the SCAG council chambers presenting to, to SCAG how that number of twenty-seven units was not acceptable for the city and providing the market analysis as well as, of course, the, the argument of a, of a built-out community. After concluding that presentation to SCAG that year, they very bluntly said that the methodology is not an appealable process and that process has now changed to today. The specific criteria that we were able to appeal these numbers currently under SCAG's guidance, my hope was to use the sewer capacity argument, which was one of the items that we could appeal upon. Given that we received a report a, a few years ago that stated that we not have a sewer capacity issue, I could not, no longer use that argument with respect to following an appeal. So given the lack of meeting the criteria for SCAG, we could not submit the appeal.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this item? I think we do.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Can somebody lower that for her?
I'm sorry, I'm short.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. First of all, I totally agree with the former person that just spoke. And unfortunately, I'm not a lawyer, but I agree with everything that he said. And I agree with the council members who have spoken so passionately for us about our city. And I appreciate that. I have lived in this city sixty years and I see it crumbling before us when we have, they do not understand what is happening. Our city should be able to decide what we want to do in our own city. No one from the state or federal government should be able to tell us what we need to do for our own city. We all moved here for a reason. And we love it the way it is and I do not understand it. And I would like, perhaps we have to have more hearings. I want to hear from our representatives, our state congressman and our state senator. What have they done for us? Nothing. They voted for this. We need to ask them. Don't just show up for Memorial Day at Lacy Park. You're supposed to do and work for us like you all do. And I appreciate everything that you have done and that you have fought this so passionately. We need people that are passionate for us. And I hope the staff, and I have been a staff member of San Marino. I taught here for twenty-three years at Carver School. And as a staff member, you have to be passionate about the city you serve and not just accept what the state is throwing at you. You have to fight. That's your job, just like our police and firemen at the back of the room. They protect us and for one, they have helped me on numerous occasions. And they deserve the credit that they have done for our city, as you have. I want somebody to fight for us. I don't want to see this city change. It is unique. Henry E. Huntington. This is his town. It is single-family dwellings. Wonderful homes, families with wonderful schools. We need to keep it this way it is. Please fight. Do everything you can do to keep it San Marino. Thank you.
Thank you. Clark Baker, are there any other public comments?
There's no one else in the room. We do have some that were previously sent in on.
There's no one else in the room. We do have some that were previously sent in on this item. I have received comments that I was able to distribute to both council and the public prior to the meeting and comments that came in without, without enough time to do that. So for those that came in before, I will summarize them. For those that came in after, I will read them full. We received an email from Ms. Elizabeth Befr, and she is voicing opposition to the housing element and provides several reasons throughout that, and that can be found on the city's website as well if you're looking for it. We also received an email from Mr. Daniel Giddings, who asked council to reject the housing plan.
Also. Go ahead.
Sure, Deborah Spalding, excuse me, Ms. Deborah Spalding at eighteen ninety-six Warwick Road, who opposed to including San Marino Community Church's parking lot in the housing element. And then we also received one from Ms. Hillary Dorsey at eighteen sixty Alhambur Road. And she states, Dear City Council Members, as a resident of Alhambur Road across the street from the Hill Harbison House, I am writing to urge the city council to remove the parking lot at San Marino Community Church from the list of parcels being considered for a high-density housing zoning designation. Our neighborhood is a unique hub of community life with three schools, a church, athletic fields, public library, and Hill Harbison House. There is lots of activity on our streets with related car and foot traffic as residents, including many children, travel to and from these areas. I believe that developing housing in this space would have a negative impact on the safety and character of our neighborhood, adding to the congestion we already experience on our streets. Also would push parking options into residential streets, creating additional safety concerns. It is my understanding that the statements in the staff report that you have received regarding the church are not correct. According to church staff, SMCC did not receive a letter from the city after the August twenty-fifth Town Hall meeting, advising the church of its inclusion on the site inventory list. Also, the statement, the leaders of the church responded with support and interest for onsite housing development in the future is not correct. Thank you for your consideration, Hillary Dorsey.
What, one other comment from Tim here Agajanian. The other appeals from Bradbury and the other cities came down to forty. I'd like to get some eyes on the city attorney's opinion in regards to not appealing it, even if you didn't think you had the grounds to appeal. You should have appealed it to fight it at the very core of the issue. It's unacceptable. I want to see the opinion letter that was written to the city in regards to that. The, that when you, when, when, when the public comments were made that we have to fight for the city, any litigation is done to be creative and to press all the rights of the city. If any city had a reason to win that, that writ or that receivership, it would be the city of San Marino. And you could always take it up to the California Supreme Court. That's a more prudent approach and probably cost less than all the consultants we've hired. I don't know who this four, four-leaf housing authority is, but we would like us, I'd like this to be recorded too, that we should find out how much they're costing us in the city. That's public record, obviously. And what the comparison would have been to at least have tried a writ. And did we exhaust all the administrative remedies? I didn't get a clear answer from the city attorney on that, whether it's Burke Williams and Sorensen or Richard Watson and Gershon. If they gave us bad advice, they have DNO insurance. That's what we're talking about at the very fundamental level of this city. I'm giving you the nuts and bolts of what city council members should have been asking, what we should have been pushing. And sometimes you file litigation to test it, not just to say, oh, we didn't have the element for it. So I'm not in the room. It's after the fact, but I'd like to answer these questions because the citizens of our city, I think if they hear what I'm saying, I think a hundred percent of them would, would want to try to press as hard as we could to get that same units that Bradbury won on, forty units. That would be a much easier argument. And I'm happy to talk to anybody if it doesn't violate the Brown Act at some point outside this meeting. I would have appeared in person, but I'm out of town. So I, I will follow up with the city. If someone could send me an email, let me know how I can get more involved and get into the solution. But I do want to get eyes on for the citizens of the state, what the city council did, what the mayor did, what the lawyers did or did not do at the time that we could have appealed it. It's unacceptable that that just came and went.
All right. Thank you for your thoughts. Were there any other public comments either here or virtual?
Yes, there's still our additional comments that we've received. We also received another email from Ms. Deborah Spalding. She, and she stated, Dear City Council Members, even though I already expressed opposition to including the San Marino Community Church's parking lot in the housing element, as a neighbor together with my husband Brian, I feel compelled to voice my concerns from another perspective. For the past twenty years, I've spent countless hours around seventeen fifty Virginia Road as an assistant Girl Scout leader, Hill Harbison House Board member, and Valentine PTA Board member for a number of years. One of my jobs as vice president of the PTA was to plan and manage the installation of new playground equipment adjacent to the church's parking lot. In addition to the reasons for opposition expressed in my emails, the neighbor, my concerns for multi-story development concern the children of San Marino. A multi-story structure will hem in the SMCC preschool, the Valentine Playground, and the Hill Harbison House lawn. Additional traffic will also create potential safety issues for children in all three areas. Given the number of children of all ages that are constantly in that area, the same concerns raised over the inclusion of Carver also apply here. In fact, the issues are six-fold, as AYSO Soccer, Little League, and Huntington Middle School occupy the adjacent spaces. I urge you to exclude SMCC's parking lot from the housing elements. Sincerely, Deborah Spalding. We also received an email from Ms. Rosemary Simmons at twenty-two hundred Orlando Road. And she stated, Dear Members of the City Council, as an interested member of our community and a member of the Hill Harbison House Board, I urge you to consider the possible dangerous consequences of your decision to place the church's parking lot on the city's housing plan. There are two schools, a nursery school, a house where Girl Scouts meet, a playground, and the Little League field in close proximity to the parking lot. On some occasions, there might be a wedding at the church, a Girl Scout overnight at Hill Harrison House, and a game on the field. Where will everyone park? The neighborhood will be overrun on many weekends, and the chance of a child being unintentionally hit by a person looking for a parking spot is a distinct possibility. The above fails to mention the possibility of a dense two-story condominium village on that property. Will our zoning be able to enforce onsite parking? Please reconsider this decision. Respectfully, Rosemary Simmons. This, we also received an email from Reverend Jessica Von Lower. Good evening, Ken and Christina. The city's agenda for the meeting at eight AM on twenty-four September states, on August nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one, city staff mailed out an informational letter and a flyer of the August twenty-fifth Town Hall meeting to both the property and business owners of these new sites. The letter advised the property and business owners of the property's inclusion on the housing element site and site inventory list. Leaders from the San Marino Community Church at seventeen fifty Virginia Road responded with support and interest for onsite housing development in the future. This is an incorrect statement on two points. First, no one on our staff appears to have received a letter from the city about the August twenty-fifth Town Hall, nor did any member of her staff receive information that SMCC was to be officially included as part of the housing overlay. Second, as a result, we could not have responded with interest for developing onsite housing on our property, nor for selling it to a developer. The leadership board of San Marino Community Church has not discussed, nor does it have plans to discuss, developing our property. On August third, I received a call from Ken telling me that churches may be considered as part of the housing element. I asked several questions at that time and followed up the email to make sure that for SMCC to be included as part of the housing element, the church could not be compelled to develop or sell. I was assured that we could not be compelled to develop or sell, and that should we be including, included in the housing element and then choose to sell or develop in the future, it would be along the lines of creating ADUs to accommodate staff housing for church employees. While I, as the pastor and our managing facility staff, are not opposed to the church being included as part of the housing element in order to assist the city's effort to identify potential housing sites in accordance with the staff's mandate, the church has not expressed interest in developing onsite housing. Furthermore, the leadership of the church has not discussed, nor have we imagined discussing, the potential of developing or selling the property. Such a decision is reserved for a session of elders, which consists of twenty-one leaders within the church. No discussion or possibility of discussion has been included in any of our leadership board's collaborations, the most recent meeting of which occurred on Wednesday, twenty-two September. As a community church, SMCC seeks to be a good neighbor and is committed to building the health of our relationships with the city, the larger community, and our local neighbors, along with our members and neighbors who thankfully notified me of this latest development this evening. We are frustrated by the insufficient and incorrect communication from the city regarding this issue. Equally, we recognize the challenge the city is facing in meeting the requirements of the state's mandate. As a result, the managing staff for the facility does not oppose our property being included in the housing element, but also does not possess intentions to develop SMCC property, formerly Reverend Jessica Von Lower.
Got it.
Then we see additional email. This is from Ms. Deborah Agajanian. And it says, Dear Mayor, Mayor Udi, we hereby join the objections asserted by Elizabeth Befr and request time to speak at tomorrow's meeting. Oh, that would be right now. Are you? Sorry, checking Zoom to see. If you're here and you'd like to speak, you can go ahead and do that.
I believe that was Tim Agajanian.
He's already had.
Who has made public comments on this.
Thank you. Okay, and then let me make sure. Mr. Richard Patland, did you want to speak on this item?
Yeah, unfortunately, I was not able to make this public hearing. But I'm, I'm like everybody else. We, I am, my wife and I are very concerned about what the state is doing. They are slowly, slowly whittling away local governments' ability to plan and develop their own communities. And I, I find it disheartening that our city has not taken more of an aggressive approach to opposing what the state has been doing in the name of housing. I mean, I have no problem with trying to deal with the issue of housing. But for me, this is an issue of property owners' rights to live in single-family homes and not change the rules and eliminate single-family residential. Our community is built on this, and that's all we have. And I strongly believe that the city, our, our representatives, need to take a more aggressive stance. I've looked at a couple of bills that have been passed and it, in and our city has not opposed or sent a letter of opposition. I didn't see any letters of opposition to a couple of these bills that have been passed. You know, I've spent some time working in the legislature, and that always has an impact, especially when somebody shows up to these hearings and opposes these, these particular policy changes. I am very, very concerned about this, and unfortunately, I was not able to attend. And if there is another public hearing in the evening, I would much appreciate the opportunity to make further comments. But I just wanted to express my, my opinion at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
There are no other requests for comment on the item.
Before we close the public hearing, are there any final questions of staff from council?
I'm wondering whether, sorry, I'll take this off. I'm wondering whether our city attorney did hear back about the importance of designating or perhaps leaving certain sites off the list at this time in order to avoid a commitment that those are potential development sites, that the city would then lose control over development decisions.
Yes. Members of the city council, it's a little awkward to go back and forth with the consultant on Zoom. But I know that she had expressed she was not concerned because we've not yet made the zoning adjustments. However, I'm looking at Government Code Section six five. Sorry. I'm looking at Government Code Section six five five eight nine point five. It's hard on the computer. D.
Could you repeat that again?
Six five. Six five five. Eight nine point five, D, five. A. Out of context, it's going to sound a little bit odd, but it basically says this paragraph cannot be utilized to disapprove a housing development project. If the housing development project is proposed on a site that is identified as suitable or available for very low, low, or moderate income households in the jurisdiction's housing element and consistent with the density specified in the housing element, even though it is inconsistent with both the jurisdiction's zoning ordinance and general plan land use designation. So I would have a concern that identifying it would enable someone to submit an application. And even though we haven't made the zoning ordinance or general plan land use designation update, since we've identified it in the housing element, we would not be able to deny the project, at least based on the criteria set forth in this particular code section. So I, I don't know if, if the consultant has a response to that. And I, and I apologize for the inability to go back and forth our dialogue separately with her prior to responding to.
Yeah, no problem. I'm not an attorney, and I will defer to whatever you find.
Thank you very much. That's helpful for us today when we make our, have our final discussions about what should be on. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Are there any other final questions for staff before we deliver? I do have one for the city attorney regarding Mr. Agajanian's suggestion to go fight this, fight to get a lower number. What are your thoughts or advice on that?
Again, I apologize. I was not around when the appeal opportunity with SCAG was presented. As the council's aware, I became your city attorney August first.
Right.
With regard to pursuing challenges to the Rena numbers, as I indicated, I know that the Orange County Cog has filed a lawsuit. And the information from the attorney representing the Orange County Cog is if they survive the demer, which has been filed by the state, then they intend to reach out to cities to join their lawsuit. But again, that's, I think the mers are set for October. So it, it may be some time before there's any resolution on that suit or any opportunity for the city to jump into that. So they are not challenging the overall Rena process. They're challenging the numbers that were used.
I think the question is, could you appeal it, exhaust your administrative remedies now? Could you appeal our city? Joining a lawsuit after the fact is, is less desirable, although one of the alternatives. But even though you weren't the city attorney, you inherited the work of the previous attorney. I don't know how long you've been practicing law, but I'd like to talk to some of the senior partners at Burke Firm about your advice and counsel, because if you could have or could do something now about it, you should advise us now, right away. You should know the answer to that question. The administrative appeal or the writ and receivership angle should have been taken. And if it wasn't taken by your predecessor, you should advise and counsel the city council now before they deliberate. They still have that option. And you should know the answer to that question. That's important to us as citizens of this city. Silence, crickets. Unacceptable.
Are there any other questions of staff before we close the public hearing? Then we will close the public hearing at this time for deliberations by council.
How are we going to go about deliberating? Because we have received advice with respect to potential conflicts of interest due to the location of the properties that have been proposed versus property that we own. For example, the question becomes whether or not I, as a resident at fourteen fifty Will Rain Road, can comment on the church property. And, and I've looked at it, and I am at about six hundred feet from where the church parking lot is. The church owns all the way down through their manes. So I'm just wondering whether or not I'm conflicted out because of that.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, with regard to the sites that are proposed to be added to the inventory, my suggestion would be that if the council is going to have a discussion about specific sites in or out, then when we get to a specific site that is within, between, that is within a thousand feet of your particular residence, you should recuse yourself. If you wish to speak on behalf of yourself as a private citizen, you can do that. You shouldn't do it from the dais. You should do it from that microphone. But otherwise, you should recuse yourself for that particular discussion. And then that particular property, the remaining council members, should make a decision about whether it should be included or not. And then any council member with a potential And then any council member with a potential conflict should return and then can move on to the next property. If you're going to talk about the concept of properties in general, I think that that's fair game with everybody participating.
Again, with the city attorney, do you feel we can appeal the number three ninety seven? Like, I think I heard Bradbury had gotten theirs down to forty.
I'm not aware of an ability of the city to appeal the specific three ninety seven number. The Orange County lawsuit is challenging the overall calculation of the number. Should the city wish to file a lawsuit challenging the overall number, which would then potentially impact the city's number as a trickle down, that is something that we could look into if you would like to pursue that course of action. But again, that lawsuit is already pending in one form.
Good. Thank you.
Can I just follow up? Would it be possible? I know. I'm not sure of where what stage it is in the demur process. And if it's possible for us to join our city to join that and challenge a similar principle, which is the allotment for Los Angeles County, I believe, or whatever is our cog unit, the larger, greater number. And so when would be the appropriate time? And is it possible to do so? Or will you bring something to us at our next council meeting or when appropriate?
Yes, I will tell you that the attorney representing Orange County cog, they're challenging for the entire SCAG region. And that includes Los Angeles County. And additionally, they had indicated they do not want anybody joining their lawsuit right now because it's going to interrupt the pleadings and likely delay the hearing on the demur. By adding parties, they're looking to have people join the lawsuit after they get through the demur stage.
And how about seceding from the state?
I know separately, the San Gabriel Valley cog is also looking at the possibility of a lawsuit, and that would be forty two cities. Thank you.
So will you come back just just to close the loop on this? Because I think there's a lot of interest in our community for us taking a more active role in laws, potential lawsuits in this regard. So I would ask if you would come back to us at our meetings and update us as to the status of the pending lawsuit, as well as whether, as Vice Mayor Jacobowski brought up, the local SCAG would is planning to file a lawsuit. And at what point we can join those? Or if we have to go it alone and have people join us, what would be your recommended path forward to pursue that avenue as well as filing something so that we at least attempt to comply? And we don't face such draconian possibilities should we not have a plan adopted by February to submit to the state?
Mr. Talt, what are your thoughts on this topic?
Um, well, I don't like it at all. I mean, I think I've made myself perfectly clear that the entire process is, I think, violative of our obligations as elected members of San Francisco City Council, which has existed since nineteen thirteen as a single family residential areas and those people such as Scott Weiner saying that is that single family housing is a sin. The bigger sin, if you could go that far, is someone in Sacramento imposing upon us something like this on just totally incorrect upside down numbers at this point. However, I also realize that if we don't take some sort of minimal action, that the imposition of Sacramento is going to be even worse under the remedies that they have. I really wish there was a way out. I think that we should lower our number. And as I've said all along, if we're going to be forced to do to allow for any part of our city that we keep it near the 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 Rosemead, pardon me, the Atlantic, San Gabriel, Atlantic Huntington area and the San Gabriel Huntington area. So I would, I'm not going to comment on on the Virginia or pardon me, the Virginia Road, because apparently I'm conflicted out. However, with respect to the 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 density minimizing the or going back to our default zoning of twenty units an acre, I don't think we should apply that any place and certainly not along the Huntington quarter near Granada. So if we're going to make adjustments and also I think we should go ahead and roll the dice on on how many units have to be low income. Because then that reduces the the overall footprint of the housing element. So I think that there are still things to be done. And I would, I realized that we've got some dates we have to deal with. However, if my recollection serves me correct, the last time when we had with twenty four units or whatever, we went back to the state and said, we're going to do this through ADU. And and we learned a lesson that we could sit down with the state and say, no, we're going to do it all the ADU. We're not going to go with mixed use in the state. Now, these these numbers are ten times as more. But I think that we should move very cautiously in dealing with these issues so as to continue to protect the reasons people live in San Marino, and that is the single family neighborhoods. So I would reject some of these purported changes and and get away from this attitude that we need six hundred and sixty to fill three ninety seven because that just doesn't work with me. I say we roll our dice with respect to that and and limit the overall impact that this housing element would have on on the city.
Thank you. Council membership for Rama, your thoughts?
I agree with what council member Talt just described. I think it's incumbent on us to honor our community's wishes and to adopt what's appropriate for San Marino and nothing more. And I think we need to this latest housing element, and I'm more than willing to go through, has a lot of issues in it still. For example, we're still talking about mixed use. We haven't precluded from the map of our missing middle, the housing. I think you've heard me speak about that. And so all of those things, including to the point of we should not be adding anything at this time. I have a problem as well. I misspoke before and I said Garfield, but you're right. It's the area between Granada and Chelsea, as well as on Virginia Road. Those should not be added at this time because they are in the middle of our city and surrounded by single family residential community and historic district, as well as this place itself, the church and is a potential historic resource. So for all of those reasons, I cannot agree to any of the suggestions given by staff. I also have issues that we are still mentioning mixed use in this document, that we are talking about the percentage of affordability at twenty percent, which if you don't want to go to fifty or sixty with me, I'm hoping that the council members will go to a much higher forty or forty five percent because that is going to be the fundamental requirement that the state is going to come back to us again and again. And we need to be realistic in our development and then explore ways that we can have those our plans met. I also think anything that's by right or objective standards should not belong in this housing element because we do not, as a city, want to do that, except we are we are required to by Senate Bill thirty five. And as I believe Vice Mayor Jacobowski said, those are coming. And Director Cervantes already has inquiries, so we really have to see what is going to happen with that program. And that's a separate thing about what standards we're going to decide to adopt for our city. But I think all language should be struck. And those programs should not be in here unless they encourage development of affordable housing. Additionally, I have one major complaint with this, in addition to the additions and the twenty percent still continuing. And that is that there's a lot of language in here. For example, on page thirty, that says the city is struggling to revise its C one standards. While the standards were drafted by staff and brought forward to approval, community opposition was strong. And ultimately, new positions were not adopted. As well as there's a lot of this talk about NIMBY and how we have a opposition from our community that keeps us from doing anything. And none of this adds to something that I want submitted to the state or represents San Marino as a community that I believe it is. We are here, and so I don't think there should be any mention of or aspersions cast on our community members for standing up for what they believe in and speaking to us about why they came here and what they would like to see in their community. I think those are legitimate concerns and should be stated only in the most positive way. And there's a lot of pejorative language in this as well. So those are my general thoughts. I am happy to go over piece by piece. The language that should be struck, if my fellow council members would feel that that's appropriate. And the last point I want to make is, well, another one is like community resistance. On the top of page seventy nine and the going from page seventy eight to page seventy nine, there's an entire section about community opposition. None of that helps our situation, and it should not be included in this draft at all. And the last point I want to make is, in addition to mixed use, another phrase that we are using in this housing element, which we do not want, is this live work concept, unless I don't understand it as a term of art. We either want residential buildings or we want commercial buildings. And we are willing to have, subject to approval, the residential buildings come in certain locations that are zoned commercial. I understand that. But a live work to me suggests a mixed use concept. And I think that this council has been elected to not have that and not bring that forward. So any instruction in that regard or planned programming, I believe, would be a mistake. We should do the minimum that we need to do to comply and get this under review. It will still come back to us, even this takes more time, unfortunately, on staff's part and on the part of our consultant. But it needs to be the most appropriate when we send it. So then we will get comments back. By December, we can have January City Council meeting, Planning Commission, and then a February City Council meeting. And in the meantime, we have to have community meetings to discuss what the final versions are, given what the state comments. So I believe even if it takes another week, that we will be able to achieve the February fifteenth. This will be our Valentine present to the state legislature.
Thank you. Dr. Wong, any any thoughts on this?
Yes, I want to thank Director Cervantes and Eva, you know, for your dedication. I know it's very hard for you. You're caught between us and this as in Sacramento. However, I think we should exhaust any options, even through litigations or even declare our city historical. And, you know, send that message to Sacramento and and we don't want Sacramento to come down and mandate us to do anything. You know, I think we can run our city ourselves. We don't need them to tell us what to do. And, you know, I just thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. There's sort of a painful irony in us reviewing the history of the general plan and our current Rena today. As most people know, today is the last day that Director Cervantes will be with us. And in looking at what is before us, the amount of work he and his staff have put into this over the last five years that I've been involved. I remember going back just to those minimal ADU requirements has been phenomenal. It will be a huge loss to the remainder of this process for us. And I wanted to state that before I move forward with my other comments. As far as appealing, let's be clear, SB eight, nine, ten, thirty five, which is already in effect, were fully supported by our state senator, our legislator and our governor. Each one of those passed with a majority vote. So I don't see who we can necessarily appeal to as individuals or a body. The state is not with us. I see following the legal process is really the only way we can go at this point. I think the hardest thing for me when nine passed is how abandoned I felt. And yes, like every single person here, the life changing impact it will have on our city. I do feel abandoned by our state folks who always act like they're listening to us. I sent a text at one point saying, what's this look like? And I got no reply. With that, as I've said earlier, we're flying this plane with lots of moving parts. Personally, I'm adamantly opposed to presenting an eight year plan. The biggest issue of all, we have made that commitment that we are working on our general plan, which has many other elements besides the housing element. And how would we then integrate what we are submitting to the state, not really knowing where that's going? If we haven't had the opportunity to work on this guiding document first. Additionally, I concur that working with properties that are on the perimeter of our city would be the wishes of our residents. I apologize to those residents who have expressed comment on all of this. We have tried so hard to make the numerous, numerous opportunities to be heard and have not heard from a number of people until this point, but we're still glad that you're here now. I just think we have a lot more work to do, and I think it would be extremely premature for us to submit an eight year plan. Yes, we would require additional cost for a consultant. But I think when we did submit our plan, that was more final, we would be much more confident of it. Thank you.
Thank you. I echo what Vice Mayor said to Director Cervantes and staff, because I know he did. You put a lot of effort into this and you did fight hard. You did push back. So appreciate appreciate that. And I also agree with a number of the things that Mr. Talt said and was echoed by other council members that rather than catch up six hundred if our number is three ninety seven, we should get closer to three ninety seven. I agree that any proposed site should be on the perimeters of the city and not not in the core. And then I'm also a little confused on what our next steps are. What what direction do you need from council?
Well, I think it's clear that we'll be holding off on submitting to HCD. We could, the consultant, as well as Eva, could continue to work with the council as far as direction and how to move forward. But there's certainly need for additional adjustments to the documents. We can certainly come back at a future city council meeting to give an update on the progress of making changes to the document as well as this adjustment to the overage of the one twenty percent. But at this point, I I've received direction as to taking the document back and making the changes necessary to to clean it up and to adjust some of the language. So.
And then I also think we would have the backbone to, you know, fight this legally or challenge some have some legal challenges. So the city attorney, if you, you know, sense an opportunity, please bring it to us.
May I, Mayor, may I ask? For assistance to staff advising this, can we reach a decision about the percentage of affordable housing at this time and give them direction in that regard? Because there still seems to be the twenty percent issue that I have a large problem with. And I would like to clarify as to what direction the other members of council, I would suggest fifty percent as our initial offer and see what the state returns to us in that regard. Because I think it's very important, a lot of the affordable housing requirement, well, the housing requirement percentage triggers by right abilities to develop. So those are exactly what we're talking about. They won't go through.
by right abilities to develop. So those are exactly what we're talking about. They won't go through design review committee or planning commission. So I believe we need to, we're given eighty-three percent of affordable housing as our goal by the state in our numbers, three hundred and thirty-one out of three hundred and ninety-seven. So we need to reach for a higher amount, and that also will preclude a lot of development going on by right, at least under this housing element. We cannot stop Senate Bill thirty-five and other projects, but we can do what we can for these, for the purpose of our housing element. So I would like us to reach a consensus if you would.
I agree. Doesn't hurt to try.
Is there a motion in that regard?
I move to have the affordable, I don't know what the correct language. The percent of project units to be affordable to lower income and moderate income households to be fifty percent throughout the housing element draft. Is that clear enough?
Is there a second? Second? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Councilmember Talt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Mayor Udi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Is there any other direction staff needs at this point?
Yes, Mayor, if we can have direction on the mixed-use discussion or the mixed-use item as well as a motion to essentially determine whether we move forward with, with that, that option or not move forward with that option.
I would move to strike any references to mixed use in this as well as references to the sole property in our city. That said, I'm sorry, I don't know, two, four, or five Huntington Drive. I'm sorry, a San Marino security address escapes me at the moment. And anything that refers to that or the need to do so, we should have one or the other use on any property in our city.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Councilmember Talt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Mayor Udi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Does staff need any other direction?
What about the church?
Oh, I will move.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna step away. I've announced that I'm conflicted because I'm within a thousand.
And I too am within a thousand. So this is only for a SNC.
Yes.
Yes.
So the issue, the issue at hand is whether to remove the San Marino Community Church property in its entirety, including the parking areas, and that address is at, sorry.
Seventeen fifty, yes. One seven five oh, Virginia Road.
Yes, that is the last item listed on our list. Do I have a motion?
I move to remove San Marino Community Church at seventeen fifty Virginia Road from our housing element in any way.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Can I also request that we remove the other properties that are, have been added and are proposed. I don't know where they are in the document, but I will say that are listed on page six of the agenda packet in the staff report to three seventy-five, eight-ten, eight forty, eight sixty, nine hundred, nine-ten, nine thirty-two, nine thirty-six, two-five-two-six, two-nine-two-oh, two-nine-seven-five, and two-nine-nine-five Huntington Drive and eleven fifty-five San Gabriel Boulevard at this time. I believe we can bring them back if should we be needed to.
Which? Is that a motion?
Yes, I don't know if you want to, I'm, I'm doing what the new ones are, so that's why I referred to the, I don't have, this doesn't show, I'm sorry, on page seven, the entire list of what we are designating does not have the recent ones. That's why I listed them out.
Or should we direct staff, because we've given them direction to target a smaller number than the six hundred and closer to four, four twenty-five? Do we wait for staff to come back with what that list looks like? So they have some flexibility?
Well, to my point, I think the ones that are from Granada, I'm going to say it right, to Chelsea, in that specific area that are new are surrounded by single-family residential, and those are entirely new to this in this iteration, along with the church. There are some other ones. Those, those are not in the center of town. Those are not on the outskirts of town, as I think the council wants to. Those I would consider in our residential area, and that's a single row of commercial development. So those specifically, I have a problem with at this time.
And, and I would agree, but that, but your list was substantially, it's eight-ten Huntington Drive to nine thirty-six Huntington Drive on page seven. There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven properties that were that, that are in that bunch.
All right, then I will stand, my motion will be amended to just refer to eight-ten, eight forty, eight sixty, right?
Yes.
Nine hundred, nine-ten, nine thirty-two, and nine fifty-six.
And we're confident we'll still end up with an okay number to submit.
We'll find out. So is that?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Councilmember Talt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Mayor Udi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Is there any other direction staff would like at this time? Okay, thank you very much. Why don't we take a five-minute break and we'll resume with item number two?
Can I ask you, Mayor, a lot of people are here for agenda item three, so I would ask that we move that up to in front of agenda item two.
Let's do that then, yes.
Thank you.
... The temporary use permit at that time was found to be the best tool the city had to offer to the group, which ultimately provided the group with a hundred and twenty-day period to operate within the building. As the code states, the director has the authority to allow for a thirty-day permit with the planning commission providing an additional ninety-day permit. This timeline has proven to be helpful for the group, but also does not cover the time necessary to have the entirety of the event and the build. As a response to this matter, staff draft a code amendment, which is attached to the report, that would extend the authority under the director by providing a timeline of up to ninety days and then an additional ninety-day timeline directed by the planning commission. Staff is prepared to proceed with this code amendment unless the council provides a different direction. Now, if the code amendment were to proceed, staff would then approach the planning commission on the code amendment before returning to the city council. With that said, staff recommends city council discuss the merits of this item and then direct staff to proceed with a code amendment as attached or as directed by the city council. Any open for questions?
Thank you, Director Cervantes. Dr. Wong, any questions?
Yes, um, well, why can't we give them a permanent permit?
Yeah, the, the permanent solution was something that we had discussed in the past, as well as the group organizers providing me with, with some advice as to what they felt was, was going to be helpful. The, the concern that I have is by virtue of zoning laws, what, what they are technically, well, I would define the activity currently in place as storage or warehousing in a C1 zone. And currently, we don't allow for storage or warehousing in a C1 zone. Moreover, if, you know, one could, could define it as manufacturing in some instance, and now that's a stretch. But I think storage and warehousing is certainly how I would see the event taking place. And being that our codes do not prohibit warehousing and storage, or prohibit warehousing and storage, I, I could not see how we could define it in, in a way where we adjust the code to allow for that specific use. In, in my feeling, I think extending the parameters around the temporarys permit would be the, the likely least impactful situation. I think it benefits the city as well as the organizers to have the timeline extended under direction of the director as well as extended under the direction of the planning commission. And so that's, that's how I can best answer that question.
Thank you. Councilmember Shepherd-Romney, any questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I think that if I'm correct, we've been doing this a long time. It's as hearing from community that the need goes back to a couple graduating classes ago, some of which were postponed during COVID and finally had their grad night. And so I believe it was last December in twenty twenty, this came forward to us, but it's been an issue for a while because I know that I dealt with this and, and with you, Director Cervantes, even for the prior group, the one that was postponed and that I was just mentioning. And their grad night preparations required a lot of extensions, and then even so, it ended up to be over because essentially the items had to be left there and they began work on the next years. So I think in December, and I'm going to pass this along to council members as well as our attorney, and there should be a section enough for everybody and yourself, and I'm sure you've seen this. There was a suggestion by the group of grad night folks, if I, if you will, Old Guard and other people that are involved, that instead of doing something like you're proposing in this, which is just extending and giving a longer temporary use permit that we just make, because this is something so fundamental to our community, that we make a special exception for them to allow their permitted use. And they did quite a good job in submitting language, but I don't see it here in this at all, nor did I see it in any of the attachments that you refer to of when this came to us as council members with our grad night updates. There was no language, so I don't know, I'm giving it. So I don't know, I'm giving it to everybody now because I think this is the best way to handle their situation because we're specifically limiting it to San Marino High School graduation celebration. And then they have their own set, which we can discuss of requirements, not no work on Sundays, et cetera, et cetera, that we can reach an agreement about or hours and those type of limitations because there is concern, they want to be fair to the residents around them. But on the same note, I I think this is a better way to proceed. And I wanted to wonder, and I'm wondering why we haven't seen this, except I get it from community members. Why did you choose to go in this just extending the temporary use permit? Because that then opens up extended temporary uses to anybody.
Yes, and with respect to the the alternative provided by the Grad Night organizers, as far as you know, specifying their use for this site, my concern was that it was so specific that what could construe that as being spot zoning. And I allow Joe to have a moment to read what has been provided. But going back to our prior attorney's work on this matter, they too felt that this this approach of the temporarys permit process would be the the best approach for dealing with that this activity, whereas looking at a potential code amendment to allow the use to remain on the site. And so that was the the interpretation that staff or direction staff was receiving from our prior city attorney's office. But given that we have a new representation by via Joe, he may have a different opinion as to what's been provided to us. And if he's prepared to respond, great, if not, then then I think we we may need some time to look at this. But ultimately speaking, the advice of our prior attorney was to seek the temporarys permit option rather than this option.
All right, and I don't know, I am just bringing this to you now because it was sent to me. And I I think maybe some background, I I'm sure you will hear it today during the public comment, but this is something very fundamental to our community that's gone on for decades. I I'm sure they you will be informed of that. So people feel very strongly that this is something that we need to include as a special. This is not every school event or anybody who wants such a thing. I mean, we could be very specific, but is there a reason against including or doing it this way? Because I think the actual suggestion that we have here before us as an attachment is overbroad. And this would allow situations that I can't foresee now, but an extended temporary use permit, everybody will then claim that they come under that and should get it for whatever their temporary use is. And this is actually the more narrow and proper one to answer the concerns of the community.
Mr. Tal, do you have any questions instead?
Oh, I was asking.
Yeah, so yeah, just real quickly, when you're talking about zoning codes, you're talking about uses and what uses you want to allow where. So what this would do is this would allow a certain use in an additional use in the C1 zone that's not currently allowed in that use, in that zone. I'd have to look at it a little more closely, but generally, you cannot limit uses by user. So that would be the concern, whether we can, I I see there's some proposed language here, whether it can be recharacterized or rewritten to address the use that you're concerned about. That's probably a way to approach it, to limit it to a certain user is problematic for equal protection reasons.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Tal, do you have any questions?
This is not necessarily, the the proposal language, you have not seen it yet.
I just skimmed it.
Okay, because it doesn't look to me that it is a specific user, it's a specific use. And in fact, they have in here that the the user can be a nonprofit organization registered with the state of California. So that broadens who could do it, maybe we take that language out.
Yeah, it says that it shall be a a nonprofit. So okay, so now you're limiting it to a category of user. So I'm not saying this.
Yeah, so if we remove, okay.
We might, we might just need to rewrite it.
Okay.
If you want to take this approach.
Thank you.
And this would apply to all C1.
Yes.
Any other questions?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Tal?
No, I do not, thank you.
Vice Mayor, any questions?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm presuming that to avoid the accusation of spot zoning, this can be hopefully massage to be something that could be legal, would that be correct, Joe?
Right, so spot zoning, the spot zoning concern would be if we picked one particular location and gave that particular location within the overall C1 zone, only that location, certain privileges that other locations similarly zone don't have, that would be the the spot zone. If this is going to apply C1 wide, anything that's C1, this applies, then it that spot zoning issue kind of goes away.
So then, just to play this out, if a nonprofit came to us and asked for extended use of another C1 vacant area with the provision that they not disturb neighbors, would we then be required to go along with that?
Well, again, I haven't reviewed it all, but depending on how broadly it's written, it it could become a use by right for anybody who meets the criteria. Now, if you want to conditionally permit the use, but you know, at that point, you're requiring a conditional use permit, which maybe you don't want to require of the applicants. It sounds like you're trying to facilitate this and without forcing them to come back over and over and over again. So again, I think we'd have to massage the language a little bit to more closely accomplish what you want to accomplish without opening the door too wide.
Thank you. And may I ask two quick questions of the representatives? The first question is, how much time do you realistically need each year from start to finish for this project? And the second question would be, what do you store between years? What kinds of items and what kinds of provisions do you have for those? Thank you.
I think Bob Horgan, I think your first question was, how much time do we need? And that's a that's a good question. It depends on how much working time we're allowed to do. We don't work on holidays, we don't work on Saturdays or Sundays, and we've been limiting it to one day a week plus Saturday, generally Wednesday. If we wanted, if we were able to work on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, like a normal construction would be in the city, then we would need probably six months. Realistically, to move in, move out, and organize and prepare for the next event, it's probably an eight month project.
And I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't get her second question, I couldn't hear it.
The second, yes, my apologies. The second question is, and what materials and or supplies are stored there year over year?
Well, first off, there's tools.
So those stay when you're not there?
For the for the putting together and taking down, the putting together and dismantling on site, we need tools and keep those there. Transportation, we have trailers here. The 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 whole program of Grad Night is set up with flats, panels, and these.
Many of us did many, many hours.
These panels are are used year in and year out for to eliminate the expense of building new ones and or the time, but they're stored and they're redecorated for each Grad Night. There are special effects things there, they're lighting things there. So we have a variety of items stored there in various locations. And they're all necessities, or we would have already thrown them out.
Thank you, I'm just trying to sort of get the big picture, thank you so much.
You're more than welcome to make an appointment and I'll meet you there and show you, walk you through. I know that Aldo has been there on several occasions. I don't know of anybody else, the fire department is there, the police department comes regularly, but I don't know about anybody else on the city staff.
Thank you, just trying to get the lay of the land, thank you so much.
Thank you. Were you going to ask me a question?
No, I have one question for Director Cervantes. In in drafting this ordinance, did you coordinate with the the organizers and is it is it acceptable to them?
They they have mentioned to me that they would prefer the option that they had passed around other than this because they are seeking a permanent solution. This, as as it's been made aware, they would have to come back every single year to request these temporarys permit.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, staff? Would I open up for public comment, is there anyone here that would like to speak at this time?
Yes.
Please.
Ms. Becky Watlington?
Good morning, Mayor Udi and council committee members and staff. I am actually going to be reading a statement that was prepared by three time Grad Night Chair and Super Resident Beth Davis, who couldn't join us this morning. And so I'll read what she's prepared.
Thank you.
San Marino High School Grad Night is a 65 year tradition that was created in order to provide a safe venue and environment for the graduating seniors to celebrate graduation. It takes place within the confines of SMHS, which is a drug free zone. Each year, the big gym, small gym, gym circle, and upper basketball courts are transformed into the theme selected by the students. This year's theme is marble, and it will take place on Friday, May 27th at 8:30 PM and conclude at 5 AM on May 28th. Over 200 parents, community volunteers were all through the night chaperoning and supervising the graduates and ensuring a safe, fun filled celebration. Grad Night is steeped in tradition, such as the graduates being treated to a sit down dinner served by the dads of the current junior class, dancing, entertainment, games, rides, prizes, and it concludes at 5 AM with a goodbye breakfast. Grad Night has always been and continues to be a big community hug to the graduating seniors. Grad Night is a special and unique gift that San Marino community gives to each and every graduating class. Currently, the majority of the work for Grad Night is conducted at the Wells Fargo Bank property at 2375 Huntington Drive. There are no other locations that offer the unique attributes of this location. It is in close proximity to the high school. The property offers approximately 20,000 square feet of covered space unencumbered by interior walls. The large expanse offers ample room to accommodate Grad Night sets, as well as allow a convenient location for community volunteers to be able to come and engage in preparation of the Grad Night sets. The PTSA does not have the financial means to rent a comparable facility, even if one can be located within proximity to the high school. All funds raised for Grad Night are derived from donations from parents, residents of the community, and corporate sponsors. 100% of those proceeds are usually exclusively for Grad Night. To raise additional funds would cause an undue hardship, not only to Grad Night, but ultimately to the graduating students, who would bear the cost of any additional expenses needed for a new location to house the sets. The Grad Night sets are an asset that benefits the community groups as well. Over the year, the PTSA has loaned the Grad Night crops and sets to the SMHS Drama Department, the Crowell Library, Huntington Middle School PTSA, the Chinese Club, and other groups for use. Wells Fargo Bank has been most generous in granting to the PCSA a licensing agreement to use this location for over 30 years. The PTSA is in full compliance with insurance requirements through the California PTA for use of this location. Moving Grad Night preparations outside of the city of San Marino would in effect destroy a unique 65 year community tradition. SMHS PTSA and the Grad Night Committee have been good neighbors and tenants, taking the following actions. Snake overflow roof drains and run rain runoff, clean and protect the interior of the space, engaged in noise mitigation efforts, including one, two phases of soundproofing the area, spending in excess of $6,000 and over $10,000 in value for man hours, and replacing steel casters with quieter casters on the dollies. We also follow the work hours of the city. Preparations for Grad Night begin in the spring of the previous year and takes approximately 15 months to plan, organize, and create the magic that is Grad Night. The unveiling of Grad Night sets, also known as Light Up, is a community wide event that is highly publicized and is attended by hundreds in the San Marino community. This year, Light Up will take place on May 25th at 7:30 PM at San Marino High School. The PTSA asks that you grant the requested continual use permit and join us at Light Up to celebrate our unique community tradition. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Are there any other people in the public that like to speak?
Mr. Bob Horgan?
Bob Horgan, thank you. Back in December of 2020, they we asked the council to consider a code revision that would permit the category applicable to Grad Night activities on a permanent basis. The intent of our request was twofold, to normalize Grad Night activities through the permit use category would greatly improve our ability to negotiate continued use of our current location. And if we were to move to another location, it would simplify our negotiations with a new landlord. What has been put forward by the city staff is a code revision that merely extends the time allowed for temporary use permit. This solves some administrative problems, but it leaves Grad Night in the same position we are currently. Communication from the city staff has been minimal. We have not been told why our proposal has not been pursued. We have not been told if the city attorney has asked, been asked to review our original proposal. We have not been provided any specific concerns to our original proposal that would allow us to mediate this concern. As a courtesy, we are due a transparent decision. We would like the following questions answered. And I believe Councilman Romney asked a question very similar to this, but was the city attorney requested to review our original proposal? And if so, what was the recommendation was made? And we haven't had an answer to that. Who made the decision to pursue a different solution other than the original proposed? And what are the specific reasons behind the decisions to pursue an alternate solution? The tradition of Grad Night has been around for 65 some years, plus years. Since its inception, Grad Night has been the longest serving council, or since its inception, the longest serving council member was Ted Theodore Bennett, who served for 15 years. Consuls come and go. Grad Night has an opportunity to be enduring legacy, be an enduring legacy. Don't let Grad Night become a legacy of this council. Grad Night has touched or will touch in the future almost every resident of this community. And I'd just like to have a show of hands, who's here right now to support Grad Night? Obviously, you see a pretty good support for a morning meeting. It would have been extremely larger for an evening meeting. It it shows me that the staff of the city council's staff in City Hall really doesn't have their finger on the pulse of the community. If so, there would have been more than 12 chairs set up for two items such as the housing and the Grad Night. The city staff should have known that there were going to be people here and they had been prepared for them. They weren't, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
Mr. John Dustin?
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, I I think it's still morning. John Dustin, 2815 Devon.
John Dustin, twenty-eight fifteen Devonport Road. Uh, just had a few quick comments. Grad Night is certainly a wonderful tradition in our close-knit community. If that tradition were to end, alumni who fondly remember their own Grad Nights would be upset. Parents who volunteered for their child's Grad Night would be saddened. And children who will realize that they will never see their own Grad Night would be disheartened. But the reality is, life in our city would go on. We would still get together on the Fourth of July in the park. The first day of school would still bring excitement to families, and graduations would continue. But Grad Night is more than just a warm and fuzzy sentimental tradition. It is a loving, practical, and effective tool that has kept the graduating seniors of this community safe from harm for sixty-five years. It is worth our very best effort to ensure its survival. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Yes. Ms. Jennifer, and I'm sorry, I cannot read your last name.
Thank you. Mayor Udi, city council members and staff. My name is Jennifer Twong. I live at five nine six South San Anita Avenue in San Marino. And I speak to you today as a longtime community volunteer, former Grad Night Chair and mom of a twenty-twenty S M H S graduate and twenty-twenty-two graduating senior. I will say that it's not hyperbole to state that Grad Night is the defining experience of all S M H S graduates and an indelible part of our San Marino community. The work, the dedication, the passion of the Old Guard, many of whom are here today, people like our three-time Chair Beth Davis and many, many community members here speaks to the cherished spot that this holds, not just in the fabric of our city, but our schools, our schools and our city. Um, I've held a lot of volunteer jobs. Um, and I'll say that Grad Night is definitely one of the biggest because of the scope and the magnitude of, you know, we have a hundred-plus-person committee. There's two hundred-plus people that come and work the night of. Um, and it's not just the construction and the painting and the designing. The Grad Night Chairs do a tremendous amount of other things like fundraising. We host all of the senior events, like the senior breakfast, movie night. We do things that benefit the community, like the capital improvements to the Wells Fargo Bank. And our twenty-twenty team oversaw the replacement of stadium seats for graduation. So we do a lot of work that's not just about doing Grad Night itself. And I tell you this because you have the opportunity to positively impact not just the Grad Night teams, but all of the volunteers and the entire community with approving this conditional use permit. Unfortunately, our time at Wells Fargo Bank, you know, may not be long. It's not an exaggeration to say that losing the bank will be devastating to the ability of Grad Night Committees and Volunteers to create the Grad Night that our S M H S graduates not only look forward to, but also deserve. Twenty-two, our twenty-twenty group has already put in hours and hours working with Wells Fargo Bank to extend the deadline to the end of next year. And as this year's P T S A President, I've appointed Liz Neer to head a legacy committee. And they've already put in hours and hours of work to find a permanent solution to the workspace for Grad Night. So, you know, in a normal year, this job is tremendous, but chairing in COVID made it an even bigger job. But we did it because we love our kids, and the community stepped up, and they did it because they love our kids. And not having the C O P will drastically affect not only this year's chairs, who are already faced with the prospect of losing the bank at the end of the year, but also will create a huge challenge for twenty-twenty-three and all future graduating classes. I'm thinking about the class of twenty thirty-four, you know, our current Carver and Valentine kindergarteners and what they have to look forward to. And granting this C O P will not only allow the twenty-twenty-two team to focus on this year's event and give Liz Neer and our Legacy Committee time to find a permanent solution to the working space for future Grad Nights. But like, you know, all previous chairs, I know that they will do whatever it takes. The people in this room are all committed, and they have shown that they will do whatever it takes to put on a Grad Night for, you know, twenty twenty-one in the middle of COVID, completely revamping the entire set and the scope of Grad Nights, so twenty twenty-one could have their Grad Night, coming back a month later to do the twenty-twenty-two reunion for the kids who would have been the first graduating seniors in sixty-five years to not have their Grad Night. So the the community, the passion and the dedication of this community is sort of unparalleled in this regard. Many of you have worked for and volunteered for Grad Night. Councilman Talt was just inducted into the Old Guard last year. And I feel like each of you has the opportunity here to sort of indubitably join our team. You have the power to do your part to support Grad Night, like so many of the other community members in San Marino. Grab this C O P, support the future of one of San Marino's cherished traditions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Ms. Julie Wong Tam?
Would I remind the public comments to hold your your time to three minutes, which will be timed by the clerk?
Good morning, Mayor Udi and members of the city council and members of the public. My name is Julie Wong Tam. I am, I live at six oh five Chester Avenue. I'm not going to repeat what my fellow Grad Night volunteer parents have been involved because they said it so eloquently, but I'm speaking as a member of mother of three kids that graduated from San Marino High School. They loved the Grad Night, and as they shared with their college friends, there's nothing like what we have because it is a wonderful tradition where the entire community participates. I was a Grad Night co-chair in the arts side. I've been involved since two thousand thirteen. And it's just a volunteer opportunity where it draws people. It's multi-generational. It's very diverse. And it's not just about putting a beautiful event. It's a safety that it brings along, but within the volunteer hours, there is so much that happens. Little, for me personally, when my daughter got sick and she needed a the the Gold Guard just created a special access ramp for her wheelchair. It was then used forever later for light-ups and the rest of the community could use. I've, as a member of my church, was able also to borrow things from for our vacation Bible study. So it is something that helps not only the graduating people, but the rest of the community, and it sets San Marino apart because people just cannot believe the amount of work that is done by volunteers, and we're proud of that. Sets that look like Hollywood, and yet is reused, and no ego involved in terms of just repainting and starting again. And the other thing is that, um, I do believe that it it is something that keeps the people together and makes it very special for our San Marino school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Paul Callahan?
Morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members, staff. Paul Callahan, I live at thirteen seventy-six Wembley, long-term resident, graduate of nineteen eighty-one class, enjoyed Grad Night. I think we've definitely established how great I think Grad Night is, so I just wanted to maybe bring a couple of points that I've heard today. Talking about representing constituents, brought up earlier in housing. I think a lot of constituents are out at Huntington and Valentine and Carver and should be considered in making your decision today. I I want to thank Aldo for his time on putting in thought and effort. However, I think we would really like a permanent solution, and I would ask the city attorney when he was talking about spot zoning to think about, it's not just we're asking for it to be at Wells Fargo. We may not be successful in negotiating with Wells Fargo. We may need to find another commercial site to work within town. Therefore, I would say, keep that in consideration. The other thing is there could be another group that wants to pop up and challenge Gold Garden to build working as a nonprofit on San Marino High School celebration. So it's not specifically for one group. It's specifically for, could be a group of people just as like a bank or a dry cleaner or anything like that. Lastly, I want to thank you guys for just considering our requests.
Thank you.
Ms. Amy Morris? Ms. Amy Morris?
I think she left.
Um, that's all the requests for speaker cards for in-person comment I received.
Bob Horgan again. You're gonna get tired of seeing me.
Never.
Mr. Mayor, explain the protocol. This is a, we're on the agenda for Grad Night, and this is a discussion period.
This is, yes, this is the period where we get public comments once.
Is it, is it the proper protocol for the community members that speak to ask a question of the staff?
It's typically the community member making a statement that we have heard. And then we will
This is a discussion, though. How can we have a discussion if I can't ask a question?
What question would you like to ask?
I would, I would like to have the, whose decision to pursue a different solution other than the one originally proposed by the Grad Night people in December of twenty twenty?
That will be made in our discussion today.
Well, how will we ever get an answer to that question?
You'll be able to observe our discussion, and at the end of the discussion, there will probably be a motion or direction to staff.
Okay.
So this is a public opportunity to provide comment, which you have, and we thank you for.
Okay, but will you answer all the three questions I asked?
What were your three questions?
Who made the decision to pursue a different solution other than the original one? What were the specific reasons behind the decision to pursue an alternate solution? And was the city attorney requested to review the original proposal? If yes, what was the recommendation made?
I think those would be very difficult for us to to be able to answer right now. But I think you'll be pleased with the outcome of the discussion we're gonna have.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Yes, we do have some public comment requests from Zoom. Ms. Kelly Manning?
Hello, everyone. I am a lifetime resident, Kelly Manning, at twenty-three oh five Brentford Road. I'm an alumni myself. I have two children graduating. And my parents were part of the community efforts in the sixties to put together this Grad Night event. It's a magical celebration. It's been going on for sixty-six years. I have also represented volunteering throughout the night since two thousand eight, when my kids were in middle school. This isn't just a high school parent experience. It's a full community engagement that we need to maintain. And part of that is really why we're here today. To say that every year coming back for temporary use has been very challenging. There's always the risk when, as mentioned previously, the Grad Night Chairs throughout the years have already spent, you know, months and months in preparation before we actually start with the public construction. I myself am part of Old Guard, and so this is so important to have a change in the ordinance that can allow for, obviously, the negotiations that we're still in with Wells Fargo to try to save that space. But as Paul Callahan and others mentioned, the need to be able to stay within the San Marino city proper, Beth Davis also included in her letter, because that's where we get the community engagement. That's where we get the support from the parents. We can't be in a position where we feel like we have to leave the city to get the work done and keep Grad Night as amazing as it has been for all of these years. So I plead with you all today, as I'm hopeful with Mayor's comment just now, that there will be some decision-making at today's meeting and that there won't be an additional extension required to come up with the decisions that are really critical for us at this time with these deadlines that we have and in support of the current class for Marvel Universe. We we plead today with all of these audience members and us on the Zoom to to have your support as council to go with the alternate proposal that City Council Member Shepper Rami has provided to you all in print. That's a critical path that we move away from the temporary use, and I thank you again for your support.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, Ms. Catherine Oliveras?
Hi, uh, thank you, city council members and city staff and everyone in attendance. I just wanted to pop up and and show my support as well for the Grad Night group. Sorry, I'm Catherine Oliveras. I live at eight five four South San Gabriel Boulevard, Pasadena. But I am here as a district, San Marino School District member, a nineteen ninety-four beneficiary of the work of Grad Night. My daughter is a twenty fourteen beneficiary. And I have two students who have yet to attend their own Grad Nights, but I very strongly look forward to to helping with those. I, it's the, everything that's, everyone that's come before me has said everything eloquently. I don't want to take too much more of your time. I just urge you to take some, give us some quick action and decisions so we can refocus our efforts on finding our, or securing our permanent location and working towards next year's Grad Night, which should be amazing, and I hope to see you all there at Light Up and maybe even volunteering with with the team. So that's all I have to say. Just thank you for supporting us.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, we also received comments. Ms. Patricia Murray was actually here in person but had to leave prior to the item being heard, and she asked that I read this for you. She lives at sixteen fifteen Los Flores, and she says she's raised her five children in this wonderful community. And they have gone on and had a safe graduation environment and party at Grad Night from the class of two thousand five, two thousand eight, two thousand ten, two thousand thirteen, and the youngest at two thousand eighteen. She also provided photos of two of her granddavies that are future class of twenty thirty-eight and class of twenty thirty-nine um that, you know, she, she's feeling like she, what did she say? Please save the Grad Night location for her grandchildren as she wants to reinvest in the community and thanks you, and again says please negotiate and help with Wells Fargo to stay at that location. And then we also received an email from Mr. Dave Link, and it states, "To the San Marino City Council, I have lived in San Marino for thirty-one years and have been involved with Grad Night since about two thousand seven. Encouraged by our older residents who came before me, I started out as a helper and then served as construction chair in two thousand ten and again in two thousand fourteen. After my sons graduated from high school, I joined the Old Guard. I, along with many others in this community, believe in and support Grad Night with my time and resources. And I urge the San Marino City Council to do so as well by directing staff to proceed with a code amendment in favor of an ordinance that supports Grad Night, Grad Night, Grad Night's use of the Wells Fargo parking lot. Grad Night is one of the best examples of community. Grad Night brings San Marino residents of all ages together to ensure our seniors will have a wonderful last night together to celebrate their graduations, friendships, and community in a safe and fun environment. San Marino students have had to suffer through very difficult times these past eighteen months. It saddens me to think that Grad Night, as we currently know it, is unnecessarily in jeopardy and that San Marino students may not experience the same extraordinary evening that their older siblings and neighbors enjoyed. I hope that the city council takes all steps necessary to ensure that the longstanding tradition of Grad Night is not yet another casualty, and that San Marino students will continue to enjoy and experience community in the years to come. San Marino may have lost its chance to defeat S B nine and ten and stop outside control of our housing, but this city council still has the ability to control where the Grad Night, which exemplifies community at its best, will prevail, will prevail. We are the current caretakers of this incredible community event. Please do not allow Grad Night to fall by the wayside on your watch. Please direct staff to draft an ordinance to protect this important tradition." Dave Link.
Thank you.
And one additional email that I received, this is from And one additional email that I received, this is from Ms. Janice Wong. Says, "Dear Members of the City Council of San Marino, I am writing to request your vote to continue to approve the construction permits for the treasured San Marino High School Grad Night event. I was the Grad Night Chair for the class of two thousand fifteen, which also was the sixtieth anniversary year. It was beyond an honor and privilege to be a part of such a wonderful tradition. My friends and other school districts were quite envious of our Grad Night, and so impressed at the longstanding commitment and dedication of the San Marino community. I know that this is an example of what makes San Marino schools exceptional. Grad Night needs to remain a continued celebration for the class of two thousand twenty-two and well beyond. At every new Grad Night committee meeting, the first question asked is, what was your Grad Night theme? As so many of SMHS graduates come back and support, to lose such a once-a-year event that brings all current, past, and future students, parents, teachers, and community together would be a tremendous and sad loss to San Marino. Again, please vote to continue this incredible, unique gift to our graduating SMHS seniors. Sincerely, Janice Wong, Grad Night Chair, Class of two thousand fifteen."
Thank you. Are there any more?
And that is all the comments for this.
Thank you. Even more. I would like to close public comment and bring the council for discussion. Mr. Tal, what are your thoughts and input, please?
Well, as we've seen today, tradition is under attack, and what San Marino stands for and does for its high school graduates as well as the community is, is something that I think, as Mr. Link pointed out, is something that we can't control. And if we cannot find a way to amend the code as suggested by the, the Old Guard or by Mr. Horgan and, and his group, rather than as what has been proposed by staff, then sometimes you just have to ask, what are you doing? So I would be in favor of adopting the, the amendment to the code as opposed to the temporary permit extension. And that we find a way to make sure that it is legally done and doesn't violate the, the laws of our great state of California. So I would be in favor of what is, what is proposed by the Old Guard. And by the way, I am a member of the Old Guard, but that does not put me in a conflict position because I have no pecuniary interest. In fact, it costs me a lot of time. Hazing that I've had to go through is remarkable.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Shepard Rami, any, any thoughts on this?
Well, I, I agree with Councilmember Tal. That's why I brought in the proposed language. I think this, we have to move forward to protect this tradition for our community. Like Ms. Manning, I was painting sets there without children even at the high school, so I have fond memories of long ago being involved, and I think I commend everybody who devotes so much of their time. It's really impressive, and this is something that we need to permanently recognize, or we need to recognize and give it a permanent place in our community so that the committee can go forward and then negotiate whether it's with Wells Fargo or potentially another landlord, but that this use is something that they can count on. And so that they could get that done and find a home or continue at the same place. So I feel strongly that we should use this, and I ask because they are under a time sensitive, if it is possible that we could adopt some of this language today and ask our city attorney to help us take action in order to do that. Because I agree, this is an incredible event, and we need to take the opportunity to do something right by our community.
Thank you. Dr. Wong, any thoughts on this?
Well, yes, I'm being a two-generation beneficiary of the Grad Night. I want to thank the Grad Night Committee and the Old Guards. And I also had the experience of helping out the Grad Night by putting up the panels and taking on the panels for my son's graduation year. So now you have my unconditional support, and I, I would like to direct staff to do whatever it takes to preserve this tradition, because that's what I campaigned for, was to preserve the tradition that we have in San Marino. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Yes, I'll echo by saying, Mr. Horgan, you and all of the Old Guard rock. And we also want to thank so many people in this room who have put in those countless hours either chairing or working very hard on it. And yes, I am in full support. If we can legally make the language so that it doesn't box us in, I'm good to go. Thank you.
I too can support a more permanent solution to this. Do we need a motion or a direction, or what's your guidance?
You do not need a motion. There's no adoption of an ordinance on your agenda today, so we would not be doing that anyway. We were just looking for direction from you, since a code amendment change would be required to go through that process. So we've heard your direction loud and clear, and we will change courses and bring it back.
Do you know how quickly, I know there's notice requirements that we have to adopt amendments to codes, but you'll, you'll need council to look at it. We redraft it, we get it on the agenda. They've been waiting for a while, and we talked about it for a while.
Yes, this will also need to go to the Planning Commission first, however. So we're looking at a couple of months before it gets back in front of council.
And why does it have to go? It is.
I think the City Council can act on their own, within their own purview, to move this forward at a faster pace.
It's a, it's a zoning code amendment. Under the government code, you have to go through the Planning Commission first for a zoning code amendment. In the interim, I, I don't know what the, what the current status of their permit is. To the extent they have a TUP right now, no. Certainly, the city could issue a TUP for the ninety days or whatever. The, you could issue a TUP while this is going through the process so they could get started, started working.
It, the, one of the reasons I'd like to see it moved as quickly as possible through in that is, it was, it would also provide comfort in the, in the discussions with, with Wells Fargo. That this, this is a permitted use now, so we can't do it as an emergency. I understand that, but how quickly can it get on Planning Commission and then come back to us?
Well, and I also have a concern. I'm gonna be honest. They have come before us since December of last year and repeatedly come forward. Bless Mr. Horgan and other members who continued, and Beth Davis. And it is very frustrating that now we're saying you have to wait a little bit longer, but we are limited by process, if you will, to do this quicker. So I'm asking you today, beyond a temporary use permit, is there some other more long-term commitment that we could make to those people? Because it is not their fault. It is absolutely the inverse of that. They have tried to get the city to move on this for ten months. So I don't know what to do to move it along faster than going through the, and I'm looking to somebody on staff to help us reach the end that all five of us agree on in a faster pace in order to help them.
Yeah, the, I don't know what the, the schedule is in terms of public hearings and all of that. I mean, certainly staff can work to expedite this within the, the timeframe or the window that we need to. I would think if we can get to the council quickly, then at least you would have your first reading, and wouldn't be, wouldn't be the second reading, but you can also do a first reading at a special meeting and a second reading at a regular meeting. So we could also truncate the, the time between the first and second reading to try to shave some of the schedule.
So we could do a special meeting soon, as soon as this could be written up. It would be only one agenda item, correct?
Well, as, as soon as we can get through the Planning Commission. So the Planning Commission, we have to do the Planning Commission public hearing, and then as soon as we're done with the Planning Commission public hearing, then we would have the City Council public hearing and the two readings, but we can truncate that timetable with special meetings.
What about the Planning Commission? Is it possible, I know we have to give proper notice, for them to have a special meeting because they just had their monthly meeting? Is there something that might be able to occur sooner than their October meeting legally?
We will do our best and try to coordinate with the new director.
Sure, that would be a good attempt. Thank you so much.
Anything else on this item? Perfect. We'll go to item number two on continued business approval of an agreement with CPS HR Consulting for our DEI program. Community Engagement Manager Fowler, please.
Hello, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Udi and Council. At the May twentieth meeting, City Council had a robust discussion about the best approach for San Marino to support efforts to address the issue of inclusion in San Marino, and ultimately approve the creation of a community-led, but city-supported diversity, equity, and inclusion task force, and appropriated forty-five thousand dollars for a trained expert to facilitate the task force to ensure that is both effective and action-oriented. After this direction was given, staff released an RFP for this trained facilitator to lead the community-led task force. The RFP was open from June eighteenth through July ninth and was disseminated widely, and in particular through the Government Alliance for Racial Equity, a nationwide network focused on this type of work. By the closing date, we had received two responses. The city manager and myself both reviewed both proposals and conducted an initial interview with each respondent team. After this initial interview, both respondents were given an opportunity to refine their proposal based on our conversations and the unique community focus needs for San Marino. After reviewing the second iteration of each proposal, it became clear that CPS HR Consulting was the most qualified to meet the needs of San Marino within our allocated budget. Staff also contacted reference checks for people doing similar work and received nothing but positive feedback about CPS HR, and in particular, Mr. Jock Whitfield, the proposed lead facilitator. Mr. Whitfield has over nineteen years of experience in diversity, equity, and inclusion work, training, facilitation, education, and community engagement, and his biography is provided in more detail in the staff report. He has consulted with many public sector agencies, including the cities of Union City and Mill Valley up north. After further conversations between CPS HR Consulting and staff to hone in on the project's scope and desired outcome, counts the appointed council members, I'm sorry, the appointed liaisons who are right now the mayor and vice mayor, interviewed CPS HR Consulting with the city manager and myself, and do support the award of this contract after this conversation. Based on this, staff recommends that City Council authorize the city manager to enter into the professional service contract with CPS HR Consulting for a diversity, equity, and inclusion facilitator to guide our community-led task force. Thank you, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Dr. Wong, any questions?
No, not right now. Thank you.
Mayor, Mr. Tal, any questions?
No.
Councilmember Shepard Rami?
Thank you very much for spearheading this, this effort.
Vice Mayor?
No questions?
I have no questions either. Anybody from the public would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for deliberations. Mr. Tal, any thoughts?
Let's, we've gone over this. Let's move forward.
Okay, then is there a motion?
I move to direct the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement with CPS HR Consulting for the amount not to exceed thirty-seven thousand, six hundred twenty dollars plus travel expenses, not to exceed ten percent of the total cost of services provided for a diversity, equity, and inclusion facilitator.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepard Rami?
Yes.
Councilmember Tal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Mayor Udi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We've been on to item number four now.
Mr. Mayor, Community Development Director Cervantes has needed to step out for a moment, so if I could request that we move to item number six, the OTS grant with Chief Contra, I'd appreciate it.
So noted. We'll move on to item six. We have the presentation, please, from Chief Contra.
Good afternoon. Still, good morning, Council Mayor. The Office of Traffic Safety, State of California. We requested a, over the past couple of years, we requested several opportunities to grants for traffic safety. Recently, Councilmember Shepard Romy contacted me about a similar grant that the city of Arcadia had requested. And after a brief conversation with the council member, we submitted a grant. In the past, they weren't approved because they didn't seem to need, according to the state, we didn't seem to need it. But what this grant does is it provides us with two parts to a grant of, excuse me, it's kind of difficult to do this.
Without a table, you're balancing.
Two parts to a grant of sixty-nine thousand dollars and fifty thousand dollars. The first grant of, part of the grant for fifty thousand dollars is for equipment. And what that equipment will do is provide us with an E-citation rider that will increase the speed that we can complete traffic citations in the field and also the data entry. And also, it will provide a software that will enable us to do a quicker input of data to Switters, which is used not only by the Police Department about traffic collisions, but also by the Public Works and our traffic engineer when we're citing issues of traffic safety. The second part is the heart of the grant, which is a traffic safety program. It also allows us to do several different traffic enforcement details such as DUI enforcement, speeding, bicycle safety, and the enables us to provide traffic safety programs for both the schools and the community. Additionally, there is a certain amount of money that is going to be provided for us to provide helmets, bicycle helmets, and also child safety seats. We have already had one officer certified by the state to install traffic, or rather, child safeties. You have the, the rest of the report in front of you. And staff recommends City Council approve the agreement for OTS grant funding and authorize chief police and the finance director to enter into the agreements with OTS in the amount not to exceed a hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred dollars for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, and add a hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred dollars of estimated revenues and appropriate, yet same amount of fund for the OTS grant fund. If the City Council concurs, staff recommendation for the appropriate motion would be to authorize the city chief police and the finance director enter the agreements with the Office of Traffic Safety in the amount not to exceed a hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred in the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, and add that amount of estimated revenues and appropriate that amount for the OTS grant. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Dr. Wong, any questions to the show? No questions, thank you. Councilmember Shepard Romy, any questions? Chief?
No, I just wanted to thank you so much for this work, excellent possibilities here, and I'm glad you didn't take the initial no for an answer, and you kept trying to get these grant funds. I think it's wonderful for our community and as well. Congratulations or thanks to Police Commander Bondic.
Thank you.
Mr. Tal, any question?
No, and I do join Councilmember Shepard Rami, and congratulations and thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Also, thank you, and I'm delighted with the paperwork it's going to save.
Yeah, thank you very much. Looks like we don't need much discussion. Is there a motion?
I move to approve and authorize the chief. I move to have public comment.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this?
There are no requests for comment on this.
Okay, then we'll come back for discussion. Now we'll have a motion.
You want me to read the rest of it, or I believe it was properly said? Chief of Police and the Finance Director to enter into agreements with the Office of Traffic Safety in an amount not to exceed one hundred and nineteen thousand dollars in the fiscal year ending June thirty, two thousand twenty-two, and add one thousand, one hundred nineteen, oh, I missed the one hundred. I'm sorry, I'm not wearing my glasses, of estimated revenue and appropriate one thousand, one hundred and nineteen, one hundred dollars from the OTS grant fund.
Sir, second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepard Romy?
Yes.
Councilmember Tal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Mayor Udi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I'd like to move on to item four, the discussion of coverage issues on the cell service. Director Cervantes?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The City Council directed staff to invite the representatives of Verizon and Spectrum to discuss coverage issues with the city. Both representatives are here this morning still and are available for questions that the council and the public can provide to them. So Verizon, I, I see the Verizon rep is here, and Spectrum, I believe, is So Verizon, I see the Verizon rep is here and Spectrum, I believe, is in the back of the room, so. Okay, so at the pleasure of the council, the Verizon rep is here for questions.
Thank you, and thank you for sticking with us, appreciate it. Does anyone from council have any questions of Verizon or staff? Gretchen?
Sure, thank you very much, Mayor. I appreciate you, your patience today, there were a lot of large items and community involvement this morning, and normally Friday meetings are not quite like that, so thank you for your patience and your time. I do have concerns, and I'm hoping you can assist me. I see that the, we were given a map, there's very little information, but we were given a coverage map in our, as an attachment to the staff report, and I believe this is Verizon coverage map was furnished by your company. Are you familiar with that?
Yes, ma'am, good morning, good morning, good afternoon, I guess, because we're right at the hospital of lunch, but yes, thank you for the opportunity to address some of your concerns. My name is Daisy with Verizon. And yes, councilmember, the map that is part of the agenda packet is actually our national map, so you can go online and pull that. So it's not a map that was specifically provided for this location, but it is available online right now.
And I am, so my question related to what this is, it does not, in my view, reflect the current state of coverage in our city, particularly since I believe, you know, you are aware, obviously, of the history and the removal of the cell towers, et cetera, because this doesn't show any change, so I'm wondering, when is this map from and when it can be updated? And then, once there might be a significant loss of coverage in this area, what Verizon will do?
Well, thank you for your question, and if I could, I would like to explain a little bit how the map depicts our coverage. So there's three different colors of red that you see, or different shades of red, shall I say. The shade of red that covers the area of concern is basically depicting that Verizon has 4G LTE and VoLTE, or voice-over LTE, coverage in the area. So it does depict that we have that for the location that is at question. Now, the next shade of red around it is a different coverage, and that coverage is basically our, what we call our 5G nationwide coverage, and that includes 4G LTE and our 850 5G nationwide coverage. So that's, and then the final layer, which you don't probably see in that map, which is the really dark red, that's what we call our 5G ultra-wideband coverage. So to narrow it down to the area in question, basically, we do have 4G LTE and VoLTE, which is a voice-over LTE, it's just not the same kind, the same level of coverage that the city had in that area prior to the relocation of our site.
I guess, okay, my first question is, when is this map, when was this map made?
I failed to answer that question. It is updated every year, and we, and it's a national map, so it's not very, it is specific to the areas, you can see, for the layers that I explained, but it's not the same kind of coverage map that, say, if we were in front of you for a project specifically, that we would provide you that is more detailed.
All right, so do you, can you tell me when the map was made?
Right.
Generated? No, I'm just?
I don't have the exact date, ma'am, but it's updated every year, usually at the beginning of the year.
Okay, so in the beginning of 2021?
Usually, yes, like, it's updated by our national team, so our local team basically provides information, and they do the updates, so I don't have a specific date to tell you.
That's fine, that's helpful to even say the beginning of the year, thank you. And the other question, I guess, then comes because this shows that everywhere in the city has, I mean, given the color coding, that you're suggesting, basically, the entire city of San Marino is equally within the 4G LTE coverage, is that the way to interpret the map?
Well, this, the area that you're questioning, which is the one near our current and old location, right, that doesn't have the same coverage as the ones around it. So there's two layers of, two shades of red that you see.
Gretchen, can I interrupt and just ask, I think the real question that the council had, and that's, you know, citizens or residents are saying that the cell service from Verizon is not adequate, so I think the question is, you know, are there things that Verizon can do or things the city can help you do to improve the cell service to our citizens?
So currently, Mayor, thanks for the question. We do not have any plans in our immediate build plan to add any new facility in the city of San Marino. We just recently, as you know, moved the two facilities at the city's request, so that that has been achieved, and that's why you are seeing the level of coverage that you're seeing right now.
Okay, so if the city would invite you to come back in and put the towers in, would that get on your build plan?
I will certainly bring that back to our network team and have them consider that for future build, but for the current build right now, we don't have anything projected, and that's, that's what we, we have at the moment.
I'm sorry to interrupt, please, please continue, Gretchen.
That's okay, Mayor, have at it. I'm glad you took that over. As far as your projected builds, how far out do you plan projected builds in communities?
Typically, two to three years out, but it does change depending on how quickly our other plans come into play, but, so it's a very much a fluid situation, but two to three years is a fair assessment.
So, just so I understand what you're saying, so there is no plan in the current two-to-three-year horizon to come back or add any towers or cell coverage in the, in this city?
No new facilities in, within the two-to-three-year timeframe, at least at the moment, that I can tell you. And also, what we have done, though, is ever since we did do the move, we have optimized the sites in the area as much as possible, but due to the height restrictions of the new locations that we have, it can only be optimized to a certain degree. And the other thing that I would like to share is that for our subscribers who have called and troubled tickets, Verizon has provided them in building solutions like an eFemto system, so that within their homes, they would have at least a booster, so to speak, for their coverage.
I'm sorry, can you say the name of the?
It's called an eFemto, E-F-E-M-T-O.
E-F-E?
M-T-O.
Okay.
And it's essentially a type of, it's almost like a booster, if I were to describe it, so that it helps coverage indoors, but it doesn't really do anything for the outdoors, the outdoors will remain the same.
Right, but in, for example, my situation, I can't get or receive any calls in my house, I go stand in the middle of my backyard and wave it around, and then I can, you know, sort of talk to the North Pole or something and get some cell coverage. So, so if people want to, in the meantime, before we, there is a projected build in the area that would help the situation, and in the meantime, there is this indoor that they can access, because there's a lot of community members, especially given the late time, who haven't stayed on, but that are concerned with their cell coverage in their homes since that went down. So this would be something that Verizon will provide.
For Verizon subscribers, they can call our customer service line and indicate that they have poor coverage and that they're having challenges with connecting within their home, and the customer service team will be able to assist, but that's obviously only available to our subscribers.
Right, and one other question that occurs to me, I understand, because I know Director Cervantes has been fielding a lot of complaints, let's say, over the last, you know, since the towers were taken down, and there's a concern, or there was an option of something called, where you put in, I'm going to say, it's not building a structure, I don't know the correct language, but that you could bring in a lower profile unit that you have, that's like a mobile unit, I don't know the proper term for such a thing, and bring that into an area that, until we can reach or work with you to have a new build to address some of the, is that possible, and what is that called, or how, how can the city help facilitate that for the areas that are really impacted once the cell towers were removed?
I believe you're referring to what we call small cells, and they're essentially, they're not mobile, they're new facilities as well, and we don't have any, any small cells projected for the city at the moment, also in the current build plan. But what small cells are, are their installations basically in the public right-of-way, and they're on either streetlights or wood poles. In the case of San Marino, I would say it's mostly streetlights, there's not a big presence of wood poles. And what essentially Verizon would do would be to replace a streetlight and install our facilities on a stronger, slightly thicker pole for structural reasons, and that's what we call small cell. A small cell, however, does not have the same range as a macro site like you had over at the middle school, so the range would be very different, but it is a smaller facility, a little bit shorter build time, and it does provide infill occasionally, depending on the area. But it's the same situation, though, whether it's a small cell or a macro, we don't have any in our build plan currently for San Marino.
And what my final question is, what can we do as a community to help get on a list and a build list or infill list, or to try some of these options in areas that are really impacted?
What I can do, ma'am, is definitely take the request, as I did the last time when I spoke to Mr. Cervantes, you know, to take it back to our team. And as I mentioned earlier, building for a network is a fluid situation, so I will put it as front and center as I can possibly to try and get some sort of a solution beyond what I have described here, which is the eFemto. And we'll just have to continue the communication between your staff and/or your offices with our teams and go from there.
Would it be helpful to have an assessment done, I mean, something that's more specific as to the areas? Is there a way to do, you know, I'm just throwing this out, so that would help our argument to get on a build list?
We, I can ask our RFP engineers to do a specific assessment, but all that will really do is reinforce what that, that map that you're looking at is showing. And unfortunately, the move to the location that we're in right now, it's .64 miles away from the last location, and in addition to that, we had to sacrifice height because of the location that we're in. So we went from about a 72-foot rad center, which is the center of the antenna, to about, I think it was 38 now is our height, so 38 rad center, so it's a very big discrepancy in height, and that's why you're seeing that it doesn't quite reach the area that it used to reach. So in order for us to even build, for example, if we were to shoot for a macro location here, we would definitely require probably a variance under your current code, because even the proposal that we brought forth in 2013, we proposed at City Hall, a monocle, a 55 rad center monocle, even that monocle would have required a variance as well. But at that time, the city did not want to lease to Verizon, which is why we ended up with this location where we're at today.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I think that was in 2016, not 2013. I remember the discussion, and I was on.
Sorry, 2013 was planning commission, 2016 was the leasing.
So the poles right now are where, your macro poles?
So we have the new location, which is .64 miles away from here, going, I'm not good with east or west, but going the other side on Huntington Drive, and then the other one, which was the high school location, also moved about .6 miles away also, and I think that's actually no longer in San Marino city boundaries.
I think that's right.
Yeah.
Um, and where are your micro locations?
I don't believe we have any small cells in San Marino currently.
Do you have small cells in Alhambra, St. Gabriel, South Pasadena?
Absolutely.
Okay, are you refusing to provide us small cells because you're mad at us?
Of course not, sir.
I mean, that's the impression you're giving, if it's a fluid situation, and you've known about this for a while, and we've got a substantial portion of the town that has crappy coverage, you gotta think that maybe this is, that Verizon is a little PO'd at us.
It's not quite that, sir, I mean.
Not quite that, or not all that?
Well, let me answer your question, and I, and I can understand why you're asking the question. Verizon, whenever we build any site, whether it's a small cell or a macro, it's at considerable expense. When we were asked to move for these two locations, that was at Verizon's considerable expense. So budget, you know, is something we planned for and where we're going, and we just don't have the current plan right now to go with a new location here in San Marino. So it's really as simple as that, it's not because of any retribution or any, anything like that. We are very proud of our coverage and would like to provide superior coverage everywhere, but the plan for the build today is what I've described to you.
Do you know why those poles needed to be moved, the macro poles?
Well, I do know the history of it, but.
Including that they, one was built on a, on a earthquake fault, the other one was built and not appropriately credentialed?
Well, we did send a letter this morning to clarify a little bit as to how the permitting happened for that particular location, which is, we had gone to the city at the time asking about the permitting requirements, and we were advised that it was not subject to local zoning and building code at that time, so that's what we went with. And in 20, I think it was 2015, no, 2013, we, we had gone to planning commission at the behest of the SMU SD, the school district, to formalize the application, and we had gone to planning commission, and we were met with significant resistance to formalize the application at that time. And so then the next step was Verizon was asked to find alternatives. We offered nine different alternative locations at that time as well, and where we landed was the City Hall location, and the City Hall location, we were rejected on lease in 2016.
Yeah, and I recall that, I wasn't at the original meeting, but it was continued, and I remember coming back, and there was a substantial problem, but let me ask you this, you know of any other cell provider, cell service provider has micro?
Small cells?
Yeah.
All carriers have small cells.
In San Marino?
Oh, I don't know about San Marino, but they, they do have small cells.
Because I know that there's a small cell, I believe it's at the corner of San Albans and Lorraine, and can you piggyback on those, like, like you do when someone puts in a large macro pole?
I wish we could. Typically, for small cells, the height is about 29.6 inches, and because of that height limitation, it's not usually a good idea from an aesthetic standpoint and structural and interference standpoint to co-locate.
The thing is ugly right now, so it really, from an aesthetic, I don't think it can make those aesthetics any worse, but people have learned to live with that. My final question is, the eFemto, do you charge your customers for the eFemto?
If it's provided due to a coverage concern, typically, no.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Wong, any questions?
Yes, yeah, I want to thank you for removing this cell phone towers per the school parent's request, but I have a question, by looking at this map, I mean, we should still have 4G LTE, so why, I mean, where are the residents not having any service?
They do have service, it's just not the same type of coverage that they had before because of the distance of our new location from where they were. So if, for example, they were closer to the middle school area where we used to be, and then because the tower is farther out and it's shorter, it can only go so far.
Right, I know, but, I mean, but looking at this, they should still have service, I mean.
People can make phone calls, people can connect, it's just not as, as fast or as well, as well as they probably did when they were at that location where our cell site used to be.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, any questions?
Yes, I sincerely say this, thank you for being here, it's very brave of you. Many of us are extremely disappointed and very frustrated with your statement that you're proud of. um, with your statement that you're proud of your co- coverage. Like Councilwoman Shepard Romi, I live in the southwest part of the city. And I know I speak for other residents nearby. Um, I do like my re- my Verizon when I'm away from my home, but as city staff can tell you, they can't call me on Verizon and I deeply, deeply resent needing to keep a landline to accept calls when I'm at home. Verizon has offered me no discount for that. Similarly, as I have discussed with our fire chief and police chief. I have to keep that landline in case I have a medical emergency. I'm surrounded by a lot of elderly people who may also have Verizon. And should they want to grab their cellphone in case of an emergency, they cannot. Um, that is a, a really frightening thought. Would you be willing as a statement of goodwill um, to the E- EFMTO, is it co- is it pronounced?
EFMTO, yes.
EFMTO, um, would you be willing to prepare for the city? Um, the statement of availability of those four Verizon customers in San Marino, including the contact number to be able to um, use to facilitate that. Personally, I've had at least fifteen or twenty communications with Verizon over the years and they just tell me, no, you don't have great cell coverage. That doesn't do me a lot of good. Um, could you commit on behalf of your company to making that available first to the city and then to be uh, dispersed to the residents who may have Verizon?
Um, let me take that back. This seems like a very reasonable res- request, Vice Mayor. Um, I will take that back to our team and see if we can generate something to that effect that we can share with you. Um, and uh, and the staff and for the residents subsequently.
Because otherwise, if you can't, and again, I'm not being facetious. It might be a recommendation to suggest that we not have Verizon in this section of the city. There could be some inherent dangers if people are relying on it solely. And there's nothing wrong with making that recommendation if you simply can't offer coverage. But I'd love to work with you and I'd love to be able to have that option. So.
Okay.
Thank you so much and I really appreciate you being here.
Of course, of course. Thank you for the opportunity to answer your questions and like I said, we are definitely open to more dialogue and more solution seeking um, with the city and staff. Uh, so our Mr. Cervantes has my number um, and my contact information. So I will take your comments back to our staff, I'm sorry, to our team and, and see what we can offer hopefully as a more permanent solution moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you for, for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Are there any public comments on this topic?
Yes, um, Ms. Kelly Manning?
Hi, everyone. I'm back. Um, I appreciate having this Zoom since I'm unable to attend. I, I want to um, thank as well the representative. I would like for record to have her name because I did not catch her name. So if that can be provided in the record for um, minutes. As well, I'm grateful to Vice Mayor Jacobowski because she spoke just now of exactly what my public comment was really going to be focused on, which is the need for any information specific to the direct phone numbers to the customer service representatives that can actually provide us with the EFMTO slash the booster. That is something that um, four or five months ago, I spent three hours on the phone with Verizon. I've been a Verizon carrier for twenty plus years. I live six blocks from City Hall, south of City Hall. I cannot, contrary to what the representative said, I cannot make calls as supported by Jacobowski. Where we might have emergencies, I get call fail. So it's not just that I have an inferior cellular experience. I have no cellular experience inside my home. And I have not been able to get to the tier two, I believe, level tech support, which is only offered through texting to be able to make the successful request and receive the EFMTO booster. So as a community member, there are many, many of us, as spoken by our city council members as well, that are without service, not just inferior to Verizon. And we are looking for immediate solutions far inside a two to three year plan to bring facilities back into our city. So thank you for, again, being there today, giving us the information and I'll hope to get additional information offered by Verizon as soon as possible.
Yes.
Um, just to um, mention to the resident, if she is willing to provide us her address and phone number through Mr. Cervantes. Um, we can have our team um, look into that location specifically, especially and find out also about the EFMTO solution for her. And um, and I do want to apologize that she's been attempting very, you know, that having very much difficulty trying to reach our customer service line. All our customers should be able to reach our customer service at six one one for your Verizon phone. And that should be, um, and if there were delays on trying to connect with somebody, that I do apologize for.
Thank you.
Yes, I can go on record. Kelly Manning at two three zero five Brent Ford Road, San Marino, nine one one oh eight.
All right, we'll hit that for any other public comments?
Appreciate that.
There, um, another public spectrum representative is on Zoom, Mr. Peter Hidalgo.
Thank you very much. Uh, good afternoon, uh, mayor and members of the council and uh, Dr. Marlo. Peter Hidalgo with Spectrum. We are owned by Charter Communications, but you know us popularly as Spectrum. And we have been a decades-long uh, supporter of the city of San Marino, providing vital cable services, not only in television, home phone, uh, internet, but also now Spectrum Mobile. I am here and happy to assist and answer any questions you might have. Just as a quick recap, last year about this time, Spectrum, I participated in a special evening town hall with uh, San Marino residents and addressed any concerns that they may have had. And also uh, have been working with city staff, Dr. Marlo and the team on any kind of questions that come up from residents who are customers, particularly as it relates to their internet. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any members of council have any questions for, for Spectrum? Mr. Dog? Uh, well, I'm now more interested in your um, your cellphone, uh, Spectrum cellphone. Um, what is your type, what is your coverage available here in San Marino?
The Spectrum uh, mobile is, number one, you have to be a Spectrum internet customer. And if you're a Spectrum internet customer, you are then available to use our broad spectrum wifi service. Ninety percent of the data that's carried through mobile services are through wifi. And because of our rich network throughout Southern California, you are then able to connect via your internet service. And Spectrum is, Spectrum Mobile is the fastest growing mobile service. We have more than three million customers just in the last, since we launched the service two years ago. And uh, so that's uh, to answer your question, because we're so well-built out throughout Southern California. We have uh, that kind of coverage, but we also have partnerships with our cable sister companies. Like in Northern California, we have Comcast. In San Diego, we have Cox Communications. So overall throughout the nation, all cable companies coordinate together to provide our rich uh, network system.
Did, um, it, for example, I have Spectrum at home. And uh, I know that now that when I'm, if I'm out about, I could get Spectrum TV on my, on myself, uh, on my cellphone. Is that, is it the same technology that you use to get me Spectrum TV on my telephone? What you use for um, uh, the normal cell uh, programming?
No, it is a, it is a completely separate system.
Okay.
Uh, it's a technology that's different than cell or five G. Uh, you know, Spectrum is a, a wire line broadband service. Whereas uh, our, our friends at the telco companies, AT&amp;T, Verizon, T-Mobile, they are all uh, on a wireless system.
Do you know um, the, the, there is an issue in San Marino with, with um, uh, spectrum cable at times and typically it is right, on the weekends and late on Fridays when a lot of people were, are o- o- on the internet. What can you do to improve that? Here in San Marino?
Uh, number one, we are uh, constantly monitoring. We have invested just in the last twelve months, one point three billion dollars in our network infrastructure, just uh, to ensure that we're maintaining the demand that customers want.
Well, and let me, let me stop you. And that's great, congratulations, but how much of that has been spent improving the services here uh, in San Marino?
Well, the investments apply not only in San Marino, but throughout this Los Angeles County region. And uh, if you're having specific issues with your uh, your television service. Um, it could either be uh, our, our system is tiling, for example, is generally some, some of the complaints that we get. And we, we quickly monitor that and our, our alarms go off. Uh, or it could be related to um, uh, maybe just operator error where there's a, a connection that's not a and we are happy to discuss with the customer. Sometimes we don't know that there's having, there's an issue at your home. So that's why trying to reach out to us either via text or online or over the phone is often helpful.
Well, you realize the problem. If I've got Verizon, I'm gonna have trouble texting you. Uh, if I'm in my home and um, if I'm um, uh, or if I only have cell coverage, uh, I'm gonna have trouble. And then if I'm supposed to use the internet and it's the internet that's the problem. Um, I, I'm sitting here dumbfounded with the, how proactive are you in coming to San Marino? And checking your services you provide rather than waiting for a customer to complain?
We are always uh, monitoring our system, councilman, and um, I assure you that uh, if this is a frequent occurrence. Uh, I would certainly be hearing about this. Um, but uh, appreciate your indulgence and uh, uh, anything we could do to work together and uh, ways to, to ensure that we are aware if we're not already aware. We'd love to work with you on that and any resident in San Marino.
In, in the final question, when you do come out and service a home. Um, do you use Spectrum employees or they all uh, independent contractors?
Our uh, workforce is primarily Spectrum employees, but in periods of high demand, we will uh, have a bench of contractors available to us. And just to, on that note, because uh, of our value and commitment to diversity and inclusion and uh, our employees, we recently, or rather, two years ago, we raised the minimum wage for all of our employees to twenty dollars an hour to ensure that we have the best and the brightest working with us.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from council of Spectrum?
Um, I, I have a questions too. We seem to have the same problem as my uh, fellow council member in the sense that um, we have in our area of town both Verizon and Spectrum coverage issues and that seems to have been exacerbated to some degree by the number of students and people working from home during COVID and I expect that you are aware of that because I know, for example, that um, my neighbor across the street has been quite actively campaigning, uh, or trying to get um, the cable access, I don't even know the language. Behind her that covers our area improved and has had um, Spectrum out on a number of occasions. And so I'm wondering, how often do you do an assessment? If you get repeated complaints in a certain location, how far do you drill down? Because I know this has been ongoing, uh, her complaints um, diagonally across the street. And her contacts have been consistently going on for a year and a half. Um, and have had almost sometimes monthly people come out from Verizon to deal with her cable issues and uh, you know, in, inside her house, et cetera. So I'm wondering, once you get what level of community contacts or complaints, if you will, before you do assessments in certain areas and actually install additional equipment? What can we do to help remedy this problem that is ongoing?
Um, well, I, I'm assuming you meant Spectrum versus you accidentally referenced Verizon. I don't think, yeah, I don't think Verizon would come and help us.
You're, you're, you're correct. I'm sorry.
Okay, great.
Here is, as soon as I call the Verizon and put Spectrum in everywhere.
We're all, we're all one in the same, right? The um, I assure you that on a daily basis, our system, we have a, a, a control center where we're constantly monitoring twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five, our system network. Sometimes uh, uh, our leadership will meet three times a week to ensure that our, our system is not only television, but internet and phone systems are constantly working specifically to San Marino. I can assure you that if there's a customer, uh, I've only, I've received one customer complaint from the city uh, in the last twelve months and we, I assure you that I immediately escalated that to our leadership team. And we quickly resolved the residents' internet-related concerns. And I would be happy to, if you have an address and a customer name and number. Uh, or maybe it could be provided to city staff. We would be happy to, I would love to escalate this to our leadership team for attention. And any resident has this option available to go to the city. The city knows how to reach me. And we can immediately escalate this. And I apologize for your neighbor's ongoing issue. Uh, having this going on for more than a year is unacceptable and I would like to take additional action on that if possible.
Okay, so to follow up, can I, it's sometimes difficult to go through the city. So do you have a number that um, if I can provide to that family?
I'm happy to provide this, my personal cellphone number to each one of you there and who are listening either uh, online or in person. My name is Peter Hidalgo. I am the Director of Government Affairs for Spectrum. And I'm based in Irwindale. I'm a Mount San Antonio Board of Trustee member and have a uh, active role and presence here in the San Gabriel Valley. Uh, my cellphone number is two one three, three six nine, zero zero one six. Again, Peter Hidalgo, my cellphone number is two one three, three six nine, zero zero one six.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that and appreciate that you're willing to assist. Um, and I will provide that information to those uh, in my area who seem to experience these problems. And I appreciate you taking uh, their concerns seriously. And I hope that will improve our cable. Thank you.
Are there any other questions of Spectrum? I've enjoyed my Spectrum internet. Thank you very, very bad. And, and, and I have no problem with Verizon because I'm an AT&amp;T customer.
We may all be soon.
Any thoughts from council on this or do we need to make any recommendations, take any actions?
We just hope that both, we just hope that both representatives will indeed follow up with everything that they said that they would check out and please get back to the city. Thank you so much for being here.
We'd like to move on to item number five, please. Director Cervantes, the Objective Design Standards for Streamlined Housing Projects.
Thank you, Mayor. In uh, two thousand seventeen, the governor signed uh, into law multiple housing bills, uh, including Senate Bill thirty-five. Uh, which is Affordable Housing Streamline Approval Process is the title of that bill. Uh, this bill went into effect January first of two thousand eighteen and it is set to sunset on January first of twenty twenty-six. Um, SP thirty-five provides for a streamlined ministerial approval process for affordable housing units or multiple, multi-residential units, uh, which is two or more residential units. Subject to certain conditions and consistent to objective zoning and design review standards, which is why we're discussing this this afternoon. The legislation defines objective standards as standards that involve no personal or subjective judgment by a public official or and are in a uniformly verifiable by reference to it, an external and uniform benchmark or criteria. For the city of San Marino, thus, this means that our existing design review findings and design review guidelines could not be used to review and consider these types of projects. Moreover, ministerial review and approval would be in the hands of staff and no longer required design review committee and planning commission. In response to SP thirty-five, many cities around the state have adopted such objective design standards to deal with new development projects. Many cities have not only adopted new code provisions, but have also adopted objective design standards for the streamlined housing projects uh, for use by staff as well as the potential developer. projects for use by staff as well as the potential developer. One of the, as identified in the staff report, one of these objective standards that I feel is critical is our architectural standards. And I make note to a specific style that I believe could certainly benefit the ongoing development of the city, and that's a Spanish colonial design. And we're looking to, at least through the code adoption process, look to define that in so much detail as it provides guidance to developers in terms of what the project will look like. Because currently, right now, we don't have the standards. And so, design-wise, that would make it difficult for staff to enforce them. Certainly, the council can very well look at other options for architectural styles. Another option would be to look at a building context type definition where you're not defining a specific style, but leaving the style of a proposed project to the theme of the commercial neighborhood. And so that's certainly an option, or certainly can identify a different architectural style. Staff has already drafted an ordinance, but is seeking council direction with respect to architectural design preferences. Like I said, council has the preference of defining a different style. If that is the case this afternoon or this currently, staff can go back and make adjustments to that draft ordinance at the direction of council. So staff recommends that the city council direct staff to proceed with drafting an ordinance in reference of SB 35, and to proceed with including the definition of an architectural style, or whichever the council seems fit as part of the draft ordinance. And so now I open for questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Dr. Wong?
Yes. Well, thank you for your last report. But what is the oldest building, oldest commercial building that we have in town? And what design is that? I mean, which one is the oldest?
Old Mill.
Swag designs.
I almost want to go out and say that the building on Chelsea and Huntington Drive on the south side, it's a sort of Spanish tile, a Spanish influence type of structure with a cupola on the top end.
The old pharmacy.
Exactly. Yes. Yes.
The corner one or no?
Say again?
The corner, the south.
It's the southwest corner? Southwest corner, yes. Yeah. And so that, that building is a Spanish influence architectural style. And in my, you know, history here, I think that would be the oldest commercial development.
And what design is the San Marino Security Building?
Well, in my experiences over the last almost 18 years is, you know, that the term revival has been thrown out quite loosely over the years. And so I would consider the property on Chelsea Huntington Drive to not be a revival. I consider it to be a pure architectural, you know, Spanish-style building. With respect to the San Marino Security Building, that is a revival, Spanish-style building, which is, you know, I don't want to upset, you know, the owner of that property or the designer, but it's, it's, is not exactly in keeping with the historic nature fabric.
It's your last day. Go for it.
Well, we know where you're going though.
Exactly.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
That's all. Mr. Told, any questions? Staff?
Um, yes, just one question. SB 35 applies to all property in the city.
Correct.
So if I know in your report, you talk about commercial property, but let's say someone on the corner of Monterey and San Albans wants to put in a two-unit, this then would require that they use the Spanish.
Yeah, and I apologize for neglecting to say this, but the objective standards that we go and define will, will also play a role for SB 9 projects. But to answer your question specifically, yes, the, including the definitions of all the architectural styles, as far as now being objective standards, will certainly play a role in how we see that type of development in a residential zone.
Why can't we have more than one alternative?
No, you can't. And so what I had, what I had, in terms of the draft ordinance, I had looked at defining all of our architectural styles by taking them from our design guidelines, which our design guidelines do a very good job in doing is identifying the character-defining features for all of our styles. Our intention is to codify those styles. So in the case of a project in a residential zone, they would be mandated to follow that, that now objective standard.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Shepherd, any questions?
Yeah, so along the same lines, I, we discussed that I have a problem with choosing any one type of architecture, especially considering how invasive Senate Bill 35 will be potentially for projects all over our city. And what makes San Marino, I think, unique is that it does have a significant amount of variety of architectural styles, most of which are well represented and defined in the guidelines. And so, fundamentally, I don't want to say Spanish, because I don't think that's appropriate at all. I don't even know that that's most of our housing stock. But in a broad sense, I'm trying to understand if we are codifying what are in our design review guidelines as a potential, all of the various styles, architectural styles, and the character-defining features, is that going to be in conflict with what you said at the beginning that we, or what you read, that the requirement is that objective standards are uniformly verifiable by reference to an external and uniform benchmark of criteria? So I had envisioned that we could adopt our design review guidelines and then establish or also refer to the International or the National Association of Architects, or whatever is the group that probably has a book that has. So is that the direction that you're suggesting that we go, as long as we can bring our design review guidelines into some type of code, along with those various examples with the character defining, and then refer to an architectural, so to speak, manual? I don't know what, what is, what is it we have to do that's this external source in order to make this fly?
Yeah. And so the council can certainly look at codifying our design review guidelines. That alone is not going to create the objective standards that we're looking for. The other objective standards that we need to also include in the ordinance are parking standards, setback requirements, height limitations, offsetting of the architectural features of the, I mean, there's, you have to be as specific as you can in a way where you're dictating design the way that San Marino wants to see it. Other cities have drafted SB 35 objective standards, but they've drafted them to result in the high-density development that you see around this, around other cities. That's not going to fit here. And so that's why it's not only adopting or codifying our design requirements or design guidelines, but also taking a step further and, and adding objective requirements such as setbacks and height requirements.
Right. And so to follow up on that, so don't we actually have in our code, when we have district, you know, different areas of the city are different districts, and they have very specific setbacks per district that include a lot of these measurements and that are objective, you know, four feet here, and you live in another part of town, you have to have the 10-foot setback, and then whatever. So we already have that. So can we also adopt what we currently have, because that obviously would reflect the surrounding neighborhood best, and then adopt that into our this new objective standards?
I'm not so much concerned about the residential zones, because they have all the setback standards and height limitations. The residential zones where we need assistance is developing the objective design standards for residential properties. That's why the staff report is, is more geared towards commercial, because we don't have objective standards for commercial areas, or we don't have setback requirements, we don't have parking standards for residential uses in a commercial zone. So that's why the, the staff report is drafted in that, in that sense. But we will be thinking of as many opportunities as we have in terms of objective standards to target all of the various zones that we have with the primary purpose of ensuring that any future development is controlled in a manner that we see fit. And so whether that's codifying our design guidelines in commercial and residential areas, but also looking at, as I mentioned, FARs, maximum allowances for properties, height requirements, setbacks, and others.
Okay, so I want to be real specific here. We don't have FARs, and I don't want that to appear. We do have districts. And so in my mind, a commercial development, let's say, put it this way, a residential development in a commercial zone should reflect the surrounding residential units in the adjacent neighborhood. So for example, you don't have one commercial setback height, etc. It should be reflective, if they're going to build housing, it should be reflective of the housing that is surrounding that particular commercial lot. And that's why I brought up very specifically the districts for you. So that would be the direction to me that is most commonsensical to get a similar build that we would want, instead of trying to now do something that's the same for Huntington Drive as the same for Mission, as the same for, that wouldn't work. So that's why I'm bringing in, why would we not want to, or is there a reason that we cannot? Because to me, that seems like the best way to get residential development wherever they are in the city to be consistent with the surrounding neighborhoods and residential development.
Right. And that's why I threw out the option of, of, of looking at a building context type definition where, well, let's just put it simply, we could expand our legal neighborhood requirements, because as you know now, our findings for approving a project is that the project is compatible with the neighborhood. And so if we take that a step further and apply it to SB 35, it would, it would likely solve the concerns that you have, because it would not, the code will not dictate that you must follow a Spanish style, but it would say, look at the neighborhood, and that is going to be your context. And that's how you design the building. I mean,
Right. But again, this has to be, I see that's going to be problematic. So if I'm a real estate developer, I'm going to look at the neighborhood and go, okay, so I could build a box that meets all these things and put something on it, so it matches the house with shutters, and I'm done. And this has to be an over-the-counter process. So nobody's going to call them on it and say, that's not an adequate design. So we need to be really specific. And just saying context to me, as you know, looking at many projects where they start and where they finish through the design review process is a long way, a lot of changes. And so I'm just trying to, I know we can't avoid all problems, but leaving it at all broad and not referring to a specific example in the design review guidelines or in an external architectural source is going to leave this open to be the big box with something put on.
Okay.
So I'm just asking, if we go forward in this way, can the future focus in on very precise design details from an external source and incorporating the neighborhood that the district is in for any bill?
And that's the intent of this conversation, is to get direction from the councils, just like that.
Okay. And those, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Bye, Smith.
Thank you. And thank you for putting the thought into getting this before us, because when the tidal wave hits, it's going to hit us hard. Interestingly, I'm pretty comfortable with what you are proposing for the two business areas. I'm not eager for developers to come in. As you know, through the years, one of our architectural design styles is eclectic, and that usually means nightmare, and it's usually going through quite a few iterations. I'd rather feel more uniform and done in a classy way that could be defined with the design style, because we do have a number of architectural choices in this city. And some of them are really quite out there. And since we can have a designer, not an architect, presenting these, some of the designers really don't understand architectural styles. So I'm more comfortable with more conservative for our business areas. Additionally, it had been my hope for a few years, and I guess there was a reason why it hasn't happened, to have the design review guidelines updated, because by and large, much of that will become moot in January. So this is our chance to at least focus on what we can get in place right now. And since you will be moving on, if we can just sort of get the direction for pulling together what you've started, I think that's the best place we can be. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no further questions. Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this item?
There are no requests for comment on this.
Okay, then bring it back to council for deliberation and recommendations. Mr. Tolt, what are your thoughts?
Well, I think we have given recommendations. I have nothing.
For, then I'll ask, do you need anything else at this time?
No, we're just seeking direction as to, for example, Councilmember Shepherd-Romney's suggestion of criteria guidelines, not selecting a specific architectural style, but going towards like more of a neighborhood compatibility standard, if we can just get a motion on that.
I move to do so. Whatever, fill the blank. I leave it to you to pass on your wisdom. Thank you. I think you know what I was trying to say, and I could not articulate it in a motion, but I move to do so with a variety of styles and reference to the surrounding neighborhood.
I'm seeing some questioning faces. I would just say, the choice in front of you right now is Councilmember Shepherd-Romney has suggested that we not designate a specific style, but rather say, if you're going to do this style, these are the standards you need to meet. If you're going to do this style, these are the standards you need to meet. The alternative presented to you in the staff report was to designate one style of Spanish colonial. So those are the two choices. And I'm not sure we need a formal motion, but we certainly need to know what the consensus of the council is. And I think we got a formal motion, so we can certainly proceed on that. And then you would just need a second.
However, I can retract that if people want to voice their direction, whatever you would like.
Not to, to me, it makes sense to give owners choices and give them guidelines on what the area is like. So when you said that, it resonated with me.
I agree.
Let's do it.
Okay, there's your direction. Thank you. Moving on to item number seven, please. City Manager Marla.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, we have spoken at length that this is Community Development Director Serrano. This is his last meeting. And I would like to extend my personal thank you for all the service that he's given to San Marino. I think we all know that nobody has fought harder to take care of San Marino and keep it San Marino than also has. And his loss will be keenly felt. And the community is far better off for having him been part of it. And we will be with him leaving it. And your partnership is not quantifiable and very much appreciated. That being said, he is moving on to greater opportunities where he will dazzle another city with everything that he brings to the table, and we wish him all of the best of luck. We do need to turn our attention to the future. And I have in front of you a recommendation to concur in my appointment of Mr. Alex Hamilton as the interim Community Development Director. He is a retired annuitant, which requires the adoption of the resolution that you have in front of you, Resolution Number R-2121. Mr. Hamilton retired from public services, the city manager for the city of Valmonte, and came up through his career in community development. As a retiree, he's actually returned a little bit to his roots. He actually just completed an interim stint in the city of Rialto as their interim Community Development Director, and by all accounts, was very well-liked and respected. So without any further ado, I would like to recommend that you concur in that appointment and adopt Resolution Number R-2121. I'm available for any questions.
Does anyone from council have any questions? Is the city manager? On the side of the table, any questions? All right. Any public comments on this?
There are no requests for comment.
Back to the council for deliberation. I bet I'm asking, is there a motion?
No, I refuse to let all the go.
Yeah. Reject his resignation letter. I move to concur in the city manager's appointment about Mr. Alex Hamilton as interim Community Development Director by approving Resolution by approving Resolution number R dash twenty-one dash twenty-one.
Is there a second?
I'll second and announce that the mayor during the meeting in honor of Director Cervantes after his incredible service to the city and doing so much for the residents in our entire city as well as our city council, many before us, to help guide our city and help a mentor of many employees and your colleagues now. And I can never thank you enough from the bottom of my heart. So I would like to see that recognized officially.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd Rami?
Yes.
Councilmember Talt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Mayor Udi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Written communications, do we have any written communications or public writings for distribution? Seeing none, are there any final public comments? Future agenda items, does anyone want to suggest something?
Can't remember.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's discuss the housing.
Yeah, what, no, I, one, one thing I would like to like to suggest, and this is on behalf of the Economic Development Committee, they would like us to consider some, you know, enhancements and beautifications in Mission District such as trash cans or or benches and bike racks, nothing too capital intensive, but would would like us to um, to consider that. Is that acceptable?
Bring back a proposal about some specific gun, the Sprite.
Yeah.
Let's do it.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to recess the regular meeting to closed session.